All right, well, welcome to everyone to the February 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you're all with us this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you all and ask that the clerk read the virtual meeting notice.
Yes, this meeting has been posted and is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2 and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings. Public comments were accepted until noon today for those who wanted to join us virtually and speak on either public hearing items or general public comments. Speaker forms can be filled out at www.fallschurchva.gov-publiccomment before noon on the day of the meeting if you wish to speak on any item. Written public comments, including those regarding the public hearing items for tonight, can be sent to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. When we receive comments during the week, at that address, they are sent directly to City Council and summarized during the written comments portion of the agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Will you please call Roll?
Yes, Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Litkinhouse?
Here.
Ms. Shontz Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you very much, and we'll now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I would just ask if we could put the American flag on the screen for all to take a look at. All right, so if you would please join with me and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so, and before we get started in the receipt of public comments and City Council requests, today is a milestone, an unfortunate milestone, of 500,000 deaths from COVID here in the United States. And I thought before we get started with tonight's meeting, we could just have a brief moment of silence for all of us. So I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. All right, Madam Clerk, will you go on to receipt a public comment, particularly the summary of written comments?
Yes, we had several comments about the Founder's Row special exception. Mary Chavez asked that Council consider the fiscal ramifications of allowing full rental of apartments before the theater and the retail are built. Laura Gogel of 308 Pine Street wrote in opposition to the developers' request to substitute an escrow fund for the original commitment for a movie theater. Abram Mark Massey, 203 Grove Avenue, wrote in opposition to granting the developers' request. Stephen Miller, 1005 Jennifer Lane, said that additional concessions from the developer were needed if changes to the agreement were made. Lorraine O'Rourke of 807 Lincoln Avenue said that the city should benefit if the developer is given a waiver on the theater agreement. Lisa Veruxis of 301 Grove Avenue asked that the developers' requests be rejected, and at the very least, the city receive any interest accrued on the escrow funds and that the escrow funds default to the city if the theater is not completed by a specific date. The Village Preservation and Improvement Society provided comments on the developers' request and suggested that a combination of the following be negotiated. The escrow account and all accrued interest be payable to the city after three years if the theater lease is not signed. The escrow be an amount for each unit payable to the city after three years if a movie theater lease is not signed. And increase the percentage of ADUs to 10% of the total number of units at the expense of the developer and not shifted from other concessions. Then we had comments, the following wrote in favor of the comprehensive Lincoln Avenue Plan presented to the Planning Commission by city staff. Jeff Jordan, these are folks from Lincoln Avenue, Jeff Jordan, Andrew Olison, Catherine Labetti, John Bell, Leeksmi Noran, Sarah Tarpgaard, Andrew Tarpgaard, Susan Martin, Diane Zanetti, Paul Thomas, Jennifer Thomas, Kristy Swinney, and Gabriel Swinney. Regarding the noise ordinance, Mary Nguyen from 455 at Tanner Hill requested that live music hours not be extended. Deborah Z. Roth said she supported live music but was concerned about the distress expressed by neighbors of the Falls Church distillers. She suggested that a compromise might be made to benefit everyone after an investigation of the actual decibel levels. Greg Wick, 455 at Tanner Hill, suggested ways to mitigate the impact of live music at the Falls Church distillers, noting that he was moving to another part of the building to avoid the sound. In other written comments, Louise and Colin Storm requested that the third Monday in February be designated as President's Day in Falls Church to avoid glorifying those that owned enslaved people. The ESC's Energy Transition Subcommittee provided their review comments on the special exception code provisions. David Beto asked that the city focus 100% on vaccination solutions for residents and then attend to other city matters. A.T. Weiner of 805 East Broad Street asked that future spending on the bike share program be suspended. Leslie Rye of 214 Lawton Street wrote with concerns about pedestrian safety issue with the signalization at South Maple and West Annandale. And the Village Preservation and Improvement Society provided comments on proposed LED lighting, the proposed LED lighting project that was outlined in the CIP. And that was it for written comments.
All right, we've got, we had a fair amount of comments there, didn't we?
We did.
How about the receipt of public comments?
Yes, we do have several speakers to sign up. The first one we have is Andrew Tarpgaard. I believe he is ready and ready for you, Mayor.
All right, and I tell you, when we read these, why don't we read the next person who's on deck so they can be prepared as well when we're done?
Yeah, we have Gabriel and Kristy Swinney and their family. They're up next.
All right, well, let's start off with Mr. Tarpgaard.
And we do have a three-minute limit, so if we can stick to that, that's very helpful.
Great, and how we traditionally do those is you state your name and address for the record as well. So, welcome, Mr. Tarpgaard. Are you there?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
We can indeed. Welcome.
Okay, again, my name is Andrew Tarpgaard, and we live at 417 Lincoln Avenue, and I thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Recently, you received a letter dated February 8th, co-signed by my wife Sarah and me and other Lincoln Avenue neighbors supporting the greening of Lincoln Avenue concept proposal that was made by city staff at the December Planning Commission meeting. We strongly support the overall objectives of the concept for Lincoln Avenue. First and most importantly is improving safety. Traffic calming on Lincoln Avenue is an issue we've been working on for almost 12 years now, and we've seen some improvements made, including the crosswalks and islands and the restriping that was done, and we are thankful for that. However, city data still shows that the speeds are dangerously high. But the proposal has other benefits for Lincoln Avenue, including improving the environment with better stormwater management and more trees, and making the street more neighborly with better pedestrian and bike access. We support this comprehensive proposal for improving Lincoln Avenue, and we ask that you include the proposal on the city's capital improvement budget or take other action as needed to move the concept forward. Thank you very much for your time, Council and Mayor Tarter.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker, please?
Yes, Gabriel and Kristy Swinney.
Thank you, and thank you to the Council and the mayor for your time and work on this and all the many other issues you work on. So yes, as you heard, I'm going to be speaking today in support of a proposal to approve a number of improvements to Lincoln Avenue. My name's Gabriel Swinney, here with my wife Kristy Swinney, and we live at 421 Lincoln. So I've introduced myself, but I'd also like to introduce the street a little bit to you all. There's things that everyone probably knows about Lincoln Avenue and things you may not know. Things you might know is that Lincoln is a relatively short residential street. It's filled with families of all ages. But we are not the only ones, those of us who live here are not the only ones who use this road, far, far from it. Lincoln is used by hundreds, if not thousands, of people, at least not during COVID times, to avoid traffic lights and bottlenecks on Broad Street. It's essentially a cut through between West and the entire complex of transportation things over at East Falls Church. What you may not know is that this is an extremely close-knit community. There are dozens of children who happen to be around the same age in elementary and middle school. And there's one of the largest school bus stops for the Falls Church Public Schools right here on Lincoln at Meridian. So we have sidewalks. They're in significant need of repair, and we do have some crosswalks, thanks to you all, about two years old. But in those two years, we've had somewhere between six and a dozen pretty significant crashes of cars crashing directly into the concrete crosswalks right in the middle of Lincoln Avenue. The posted speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but as I think you've heard, the average speed of traffic on this road is actually far, far higher. There are several near-blind turns on the street, and we've personally had to rescue our own children, as well as children of other families in the neighborhood from near misses from speeding cars turning or driving down Lincoln Avenue. It's also a very wide road, but there has been essentially no effort at greening or reducing the impact of all of that pavement on our community. So taking all these facts together, we have a problem. Lincoln Avenue serves a major role in the commuting and traveling options for people not only here but in the broader Falls Church region. But the impact of all that usage really comes at the cost of the livability and safety of those of us who do live here. So we can't change the fact that Lincoln is a major road, but we can alleviate those problems. So you have before you a proposal that recommends several steps. You've heard about them already, but addition of green spaces, enhanced crosswalks, improvements to stormwater drainage, and alterations to what is essentially right now unregulated street parking. If you do approve these measures, taking into account all the other priorities that we realize you have before you, including, you know, livability of the city and affordable housing, if you can approve these measures and find funding, this plan would reduce the speed of traffic, protect pedestrians, especially school-aged children, heighten the sense of community we have, contribute to citywide goals for environmental sustainability, and frankly, make Falls Church safer and more livable, not only for those of us who actually live on Lincoln Avenue, but for the much broader community that travels on Lincoln Avenue and imposes all those costs on us who do live here. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much yourselves. Madam Clerk, the next speaker?
Yes, and I want to say that was perfectly three minutes. Very good. Arthur Agen, is that correct? Pronunciation, Mr. Agen?
It's Agen.
Agen.
Very, very close.
I tried so hard. Arthur Agen is here to speak, and...
All right, welcome, sir.
Thank you. I'm also going to repeat what you've just heard from the last two speakers. I also live on Lincoln Avenue at 407B, the same stretch, same side of the road as the last two speakers, and really agree with what others have said as well. The main thing I want to bring up in addition to what they have said is the impact of Founder's Row on Lincoln Avenue and Northwest Street as well. If you look at the traffic flow, and I hope Founder's Row is a roaring success, if you look at how people will be getting to Founder's Row, from North Arlington, from McLean, from 66, all of those are going to be coming in on Lincoln Avenue and Northwest Street. I applaud the comprehensive plan because we need to be looking at this before this becomes an even worse problem. We already have a problem with, as been stated, we need to be getting ahead of this. The Founder's Row development is also going to impact us at the wrong, at the worst time because it's not going to impact during rush hour when we have the worst impacts that you've heard, but it will be starting to impact in evenings and weekends. So we're broadening all of these issues. We need to get ahead of it. The other thing I would like to point out and then talk a little bit is the sidewalk situation. We need to go beyond the curb and discuss all the pieces. The sidewalks on Lincoln Avenue are narrow, and they have poles through them, and then right next to them, they have other appliances. I personally have destroyed two or three umbrellas taking my son to the bus stop, aforementioned Meridian and Lincoln. So we need to clean up those, we need to widen the crosswalks and make the entire experience much more walkable, bikeable, and friendly to the people who live there.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time to come to speak with us tonight. Are there any other speakers, Ms. Heath?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you all to our speakers, and coincidentally, in just a moment, we're going to be speaking with the CACT, which is tasked with working on transportation solutions here in the city. And speaking of which, I guess it's time now. Do we have folks from the CACT here with us this evening?
Yes, Dave Gustafson's here.
Okay, welcome, and thank you for coming out, and we understand you're going to present to us your annual report. I know you probably just heard the speakers speak about Lincoln Avenue, but I know there's plenty more going on, and so we'd like to hear what you have to say. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of Council. Thank you for having me back. We're in a bit of a unique situation with CACT. We've had a lot of turnover in the last couple of months, as you know, and we appreciate all the help that the Appointments Committee has given us in the last couple of months in the Clerk's office in getting the word out about our vacancies and giving us a very impressive slate of applicants. So we're very grateful for that, and we look forward to being back at full strength very soon. Like everything in the world, 2020 was sort of upended our plans with the CACT last year. With traffic calming, I know with Great Falls and Little Falls, Jeff Sykes and the Planning Department and DCPW did a great job getting the word out about having the, getting community input on the various aspects of the Great Falls-Little Falls Plan, which proved to be a challenge, given the fact that many people in the neighborhood have kind of decamped to other areas. So we'll be continuing to keep an eye on neighborhood traffic calming and sort of potentially revisiting sort of how we move forward with other projects. We're looking forward to the Greenway Down project, and we know that, and we appreciate all the support that Council has given us about neighborhood traffic calming and the amount of funding, and we too are interested in clearing the queue. We're also excited about getting started with more efforts to build sidewalks throughout the city. We started drafting some early parameters for, or suggested parameters for neighborhood sidewalk program. We've been in touch with a couple of members of Council about that. I think we'll be, CACT will be discussing that again in the next month or two. One of the things that we've been interested in lately is to look at tactical urbanism. It's basically saying like, let's just try something and see what works when it comes to different projects around the city. So if you Google tactical urbanism, you'll see there are a lot of examples around the, around the country and around the world of communities that have tackled a particular challenge in a given neighborhood or on a certain street by using a playbook of different techniques, by sometimes putting planters in, putting seeding in certain areas, trying things out, seeing how it goes. So we produced a memo to Council a couple of months ago, and one of the, one of the applicants for CACT had suggested in our January meeting that tactical urbanism might be an approach that's worth exploring when it comes to the Lincoln Avenue project that was discussed earlier tonight. We know that it can take quite a while to gather all of the data and the funding and community support for a project of that scope. And so tactical urbanism might be one way that a city like ours could try to tackle certain problems and get feedback from the community, get feedback from users, and also collect some data. So I'm happy to talk to you more about that later on. Crash data, one of our outgoing members, Paul Baldino, had worked with the police department to compile some of the traffic crash data in the city, and we got a great presentation from Captain Rao. We also appreciate him appearing in our joint meeting with the EFC last week. And so we, we hope that you find that report useful, and we might be interested in producing that report again. It sounds like something that was not, that this information was not necessarily reviewed in, you know, either through CACT or had been presented to Council in this kind of digested format. So we're, we're interested in your feedback on that, and we would be happy to take a look at providing you that information in the future. If that's something that you think would be better for staff to tackle, we're happy to work with you on that. And then as development continues with the West Falls Project and Broad in Washington, we're happy to continue to stay involved with transportation matters on those issues. As far as this year goes, we'll be keeping an eye on the development of the Dual Trails Project. I reached out to VDOT a few weeks ago, and they said that the bike bridge across, across Washington should be open by, should be open by either late this month or early next month. We'll also be kind of putting fresh eyes on the neighborhood traffic calming rules and how we, how we go forward with those projects. We had a great meeting last week with the EFC. We appreciate Councilman Snyder and Councilwoman Hiscott for being there. Long Club City Staff helped put that together. We had a terrific, we had a terrific turnout. I think we had 37 people at the maximum. And it's clear there are a lot of people who are interested in helping ensure that we have a very walkable, bikeable city as the city evolves from one that's more car-centric into one where there are more people using other means of transportation. We're also on standby regarding some racial equity recommendations, looking at through transportation lines. I know we're awaiting some more guidance on what you're looking for in CACT on that. And then we've discussed the possible Vision Zero policy. We've been fortunate in the last couple of years not to have any pedestrian municipalities in the, in the city, and we want to keep it that way. But we know, given the look that we've done at the crash data, that there, there are more run-ins between cars and pedestrians and cyclists and other transit than anyone would like. And so we're going to take a look at ways that we can help advise on hopefully making the city safer. A couple of other things that have come up recently, personally, I'm excited about kids going back to in-person school starting tomorrow. We've, we've been discussing how we can help advise on school transportation matters, given the changes in the capacity of busing and the number of parents who will be driving their kids as the number of classes are, that are in-person at least part of the day continues to increase. And then I know in the EFC meeting that we had last week, there was a lot of interest in the, in the bill that was moving through the state legislature regarding whether to, or giving municipalities the power to lower speed limits in certain areas to as low as 15 miles an hour. Earlier today, I dug up the report that CACT sent to Council in March 2019 regarding a proposal to lower the speed limit to 20 miles an hour, and I'm happy to discuss that later. But I know you have a full agenda, so I will leave it at that, and I'd be happy to take your questions.
All right, well, listen, first off, thank you all, both you and all the committee members, for the great work you've done. I think, as you probably know, walkability, bikeability, traffic calming are a priority of this council. And so we appreciate your hard work and heavy lifting that you've done to help the city achieve those goals. But you all have done some great work, and I know there's plenty more to come, and we hope to support you in those efforts as well. So thank you, and let me open it up to questions from my colleagues. Any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Hi, thank you.
Followed by, anyway, let's just start with Ms. Hardy.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Thanks for joining us. I will echo the mayor's words. I think the CACT does amazing work. I think transportation and pedestrian safety are definitely at the center of quality of life, of what makes Falls Church so great. And I appreciate you all being the lead of that among all of our boards and commissions, so thank you. I wanted to, a couple of comments and then just a general kind of question. So one is on traffic calming, and I think where you're going with tactical urbanism. I completely agree that I don't think we want to wait for kind of the perfect, heavy, concrete solution. I think right now, while we are in the process of clearing the queue, we will see that we'll get increased demand. As evidenced tonight by hearing from our Lincoln Avenue neighbors, people are going to want to see further improvements. And I think it's great for us to try to test out solutions where we can and try to be nimble to try to address a lot of these things and not, you know, let perfect be the enemy of the good, so to speak. So I'm glad you guys are moving in that direction with the tactical urbanism. I look forward to seeing how we can support you with that. Second, while we are on the greening of Lincoln Avenue, maybe this is a question for Mr. Shields or other staff on the call, is where do we go from here? Because I know that the Planning Commission discussion was kind of a high-level concept. I imagine it needs to get prioritized in the CIP, and given that we are a couple of weeks away from starting the budget process, is that something that we need to get underway?
So Councilmember Hardy, the CIP is the place to have that discussion. In terms of kind of major redos of streets, Park Avenue is the one where we've put forward major grant applications, and that's, you know, that project is, is moving in towards design, and we're hiring a project manager for it right now. And so that CIP process is working for that Park Avenue project, just as an example. For Lincoln Avenue, we do have an FY 2023, the planned use of a state grant matched 50/50 with local dollars to do a complete roadbed reconstruction for Lincoln Avenue, similar to what we did on West Street and other streets in the city. That is a, an opportunity to engage with the community on redesigning portions of that street. It's not in, you know, in our, the way it shows up in the CIP right now, it is not as ambitious sort of a redesign of the street as is Park Avenue, just as an example. But I think there is still an opportunity to make good traffic calming enhancements and upgrades as well as environmental benefits and greening for Lincoln Avenue. So, so that's the, the way it shows up currently in the CIP. And in my manager's report, I was, I was planning to note the CIP that the Planning Commission took action on last Wednesday, and we'll be presenting that to the City Council on March 8.
Great, so perhaps in that roadbed reconstruction project, along the lines of that tactical urbanism, we can think of kind of effective solutions like striping or planters to kind of achieve early parts of this greening of Lincoln Avenue concept without the full version of it within the budget that we've got, and then keep an eye on how we can do the full version later.
Yeah.
Terrific, thank you, and thank you to everyone who spoke up about it. I'm a big fan of it. I had seen the Planning Commission recommendation too, and it thought was a really creative way of addressing multiple things that we want to do on a big street like Lincoln. And then the third comment for you, Dave, is around the crash data and kind of looking at racial equity and where we might invest more in transportation across the city. So besides looking at kind of traditionally where we've invested a lot and where we have not gone as much investment, I'd love to make sure we also pay attention to certain commercial areas. So I know that between crash data or pedestrian, you know, incidents, there are probably certain intersections in our commercial corridors that maybe need a little more attention, whether that's with LPIs or traffic signals or crosswalks. I'd love to not just look at automobile crash data, but also pedestrian incidents because at the end of the day, I'd rather prioritize pedestrian safety over convenience for cars. And I think that's something that we've added to our council priorities now. So I'd love to see any recommendations you all have for that as well. But thank you again. Great work.
All right, Mr. Snyder? Mr. Snyder?
Well, thanks very much. David, thanks to you and the work of the CACT. It's been really quite significant. been really quite significant and contributes a lot. Um, so, um, I've once lived at 410 Lincoln Avenue, so I'm very familiar with that, uh, street. In fact, uh, one, um, one morning we were advised by a police officer that not only our car, but our visitor's car was totaled by, um, someone who, um, hit them directly and then proceeded down three lawns further on down before they abandoned their vehicle. So I'm pretty familiar with the, the issues of Lincoln Avenue and they are significant. So, uh, I look forward to continuing to, to move that forward. Um, two other things for the city manager, um, the implementation of the, uh, ability to use, uh, speed camera enforcement in school zones and the implementation, hopefully we'll get it of the, uh, the ability to lower the speed limits below 25 miles per hour. I don't need answers on that tonight, but, uh, we'll appreciate hearing from you all in the future. I think these are two, um, additional tools we can use to better control, uh, traffic, which, uh, clearly is a, a major, um, neighborhood and city issue. So again, let me, oh, and one other thing, the council of governments, um, has produced a very thorough report on highway safety measures, uh, that can be looked at. Um, and, um, hopefully that, uh, can be, um, part of the future deliberations. But I, I do want to end with, uh, thank you, uh, David, to you and all the members of the CACT for a very significant body of work.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thanks, Mayor Charter. And thank you, Dave, and all the members of the CACT. Um, your report shows that you are really engaged in some of the issues that are really important to all of us on city council related to walkability and safety. So I appreciate all the initiatives that you set forward and, uh, the work that you have all put into it. And the Lincoln Avenue request reminds me of the Route 29 project that, uh, people on the other side of town are looking to ask us to fund and make changes to Route 29 to make it safer. And, uh, those are both, I guess Lincoln Avenue is more residential and Route 29 is a mix of residential and commercial. But, um, and I don't know if this is a question for maybe for Mr. Shields, is as we prioritize these things, how, how does that work? I mean, there, there, there are problems all over the city and we're attacking them as often as we can and clearing that queue. But do we have a process for those kind of larger projects?
We do, and it is the CIP. That's the right, that's the right place to do it. And the CIP should be the expression of the transportation priorities that you've already adopted in your comp plan chapter of, uh, mobility for all modes. But for when things come up like this Lincoln Avenue opportunity, which might be, you know, something that if it ran at sort of its normal course, it might be six years out. Since we do have this roadbed reconstruction project, I think it, it gives us an opportunity to do, as Councilmember Hardy said, some of the tactical, uh, urbanism, um, ideas. And so we hope to use that as an opportunity to, to move the ball forward. And if there are bigger, more ambitious things we need to do that will cost more money, we will need to follow that grant application cycle, uh, to get the funding for that. And that's how, you know, the other major projects that you're noting have ultimately gotten, gotten done.
So as these things are arriving, I guess my question is, as these things arrive as ideas before us, um, how do we keep track of them so that we know where they all are? Sometimes they show up in the CIP project or, but they're things under consideration. So is there a way that people in the community who live on Lincoln Avenue can check in on our website and see, hey, that's where this project is? Or this is what we're doing with the federal grant to, uh, look at the Route 29 area. Where do they all show up?
Yeah. For all of our projects that are approved in the CIP and are in the, you know, in the pipeline, on the city's webpage, you can track those projects and that gets updated on a regular basis. Since the Lincoln Avenue greening project per se is not yet a project, um, it's, it's not there. Uh, the only thing that is there is the roadbed reconstruction project. So we've, you know, we'll, we'll have some more discussions about that.
Okay. But I do think because now it's, it's been proposed and it's in people's minds as something that we would like to do, there should be a way to track that somehow, I guess. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse followed by Mr. Duncan.
Thanks. Hey, Dave, I, I know I've said this before, but, um, you know, one, thank you guys for the work that you do. And, and I will say that, you know, your, your committee, um, and board amongst a, a few others are, I think are critically important to help us bring a lot of these developments that we've approved, uh, to life and really weave them into the fabric of, I think, what folks expect, which is a walkable, vibrant communities. Thanks for that work. Um, one, I'm, I'm very pleased to, to see that you guys are putting neighborhood traffic calming at the top of that list. Just a question about, um, logistics for projects that are, are ultimately identified and then, um, shepherded through by neighbors and then ultimately end up on staff's plate, specifically Greenway Downs. Do you guys continue to stay involved in a project like that? Or is once it's kind of in the hopper, you guys are moving on to something else?
Uh, in general, every month, every time we have a meeting, uh, Jeff Sykes or, or staff liaison gives us an update on, uh, where, where things stand with any NTC projects. And I know, uh, you all had a, a great presentation from Zach a few weeks ago, uh, about that. So we, we keep an eye on what, what council's hearing. Uh, Jeff keeps us updated on, uh, what's happening. Uh, many of us also serve on various, you know, working groups as they come and go with, with respect to any given project. Uh, and we're, we're often in, in, um, regular communication with, um, interested citizens in those parts of the, uh, in those parts of the, um, you know, in the areas where NTC projects are under consideration. So, uh, we, we don't just sort of dust our hands and, and walk away. We, we like to, um, see things, uh, through as much as possible. Um, so we, we keep a, you know, a fairly close eye on things, uh, but, uh, we, we often, um, rely on, on, uh, Jeff to keep us updated on kind of the, uh, the nuts and bolts of, you know, what happens, uh, month to month. But we're, we're, we're always happy to be, um, more involved if, um, if anyone, uh, ever asks for CACT representation. And we've kept an eye on the, uh, the Route 29, uh, project as well. And a few of us were at some of those meetings and we've kept up with some of the reports that have come out of there. Um, and so, you know, but it is, it is kind of a challenge, uh, to keep track of all the, um, all the projects under consideration, as Vice Mayor Connolly pointed out. Um, I would also point out the, uh, the neighborhood traffic calming page on the city's website also has a, a good map of the projects that, uh, are under consideration and ones that have been completed and has a workflow of, uh, some of the different ways that NTC projects, uh, are completed.
Okay. All right. No, I, I appreciate that. Um, I know you guys are going to try to keep your eye on the ball as much as you possibly can. But I, you know, our boards and commissions are also important outlets for communication, um, to, to citizens. It just helps us get the word out. And so, um, again, thanks for what you guys are doing, Dave. I appreciate it. Um, thanks for the presentation tonight.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I know the document spoke to the effort, uh, over on Hillwood Avenue to green Hillwood Avenue, uh, a project that took, oh golly, I don't know, the better part of 10 years, as I recall, and has, you know, had some measure of success, although there is some measure of non-success, I think, because with the traffic being pushed out to the, uh, you know, um, sides of the roads with the median in the middle, there have been an increased incident of people getting their mirrors and such knocked off. So I guess maybe I would just suggest that, uh, when we get back to normal times, the folks from Lincoln Avenue, uh, might do well to, uh, try to schedule a meeting with the Greater Hillwood Association, which is a very active group. And, you know, sit down with them or walk around with them, I guess is a better way to put it, and, uh, see what lessons that Hillwood folks feel like they've learned, uh, with the greening project of that street, um, on Southwest Street where we did have the roadbed reconstruction in, what was it, 2019? Or was it 2015? I guess it was 15. Uh, that's, that's helped. You know, we added crosswalks and pedestrian paddles and so forth. It, it has helped. Uh, the parking lanes were repainted, uh, um, it's, it's helped. It's, it's not a miracle cure. I'm not sure that I would allow my, you know, small child, if I had one, to cross unattended, uh, um, but it's, it's better. And that's maybe in the short run going to be the model that we're going to follow with Lincoln. If we're going to do the roadbed reconstruction, the lighter painted solutions, uh, are a first step to, uh, trying to take the, the street back for pedestrians and cyclists and, uh, slow down the, uh, traffic that, uh, is prone to zoom through. Thanks.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to say anything, um, before we, uh, move on? Uh, Dave, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, say a couple of quick things. Um, regarding Lincoln, I know from putting my stormwater hat on for a moment, uh, I know that, uh, a lot of the, um, a lot of the other citizens I've talked to, some of the other, you know, boards and commissions I've talked to, a lot of us, there's, there's a lot more interest in, you know, rather than just having a stormwater project or just having a traffic project, if there's ways that we can kind of, uh, get more bang for our bucks and win-win-win, uh, solutions, uh, that are sort of more holistic about making projects better, or making certain areas around the city better and, uh, ticking off a couple of different improvements across the board. Uh, those are, are things that we're all interested in doing. And there may be ways that we can kind of get some, um, get some more efficiencies and get some more bang for our buck, uh, out of that. Um, speaking of stormwater, just for a second, I do want to, uh, thank you all for the budget amendment recently for, uh, proceeding with the, uh, the Trammell Branch, uh, partial pipe, uh, where it crosses the dual trails project. Uh, we're all very excited to see that go forward and we're excited to, uh, for phase two of that, uh, to happen especially. Um, and then, uh, just lastly, I would like to, uh, to, you know, thank council for, for your time tonight. And then I just did want to, uh, also say, uh, that, that my report tonight, uh, I, I was not the one who wrote it, but I'm the one delivering it. So, uh, I would like to, uh, say thank you to, uh, our, our past chair, Andrea Calmott, uh, and our also, uh, our, one of our former past chairs, Paul Baldino, uh, and former members, uh, Addison Hertz and Bill Ackerman, uh, they've all put in years and years of service, uh, helping with CACT, helped make the, uh, community a safer place to, to move around and we're very grateful for their service. And we're also very grateful that, uh, the, uh, council, uh, the appointments committee put forth a, um, a, a great group of applicants and we're excited to get back up to speed and we're excited to start working with them. And, uh, we're excited to work with you on all these issues. And so, uh, if there's anything that we can ever do, um, to, to help, uh, help you, you know, chew on some of these important subjects, please let us know and we're, we're happy to, uh, delve into it and get you some, uh, some recommendations. So thank you all.
Thank you. And again, I, I think I want to just reiterate both for myself and I, I believe for the rest of the council that we share the goals of making this a more walkable, bikeable, um, safe, pedestrian-friendly community, vibrant community, getting people out of cars and, uh, you know, out into our neighborhoods. So, uh, we share those goals with you and we want to support, uh, you and the committee's efforts along those ways. So we look forward to our continuing, uh, co-operation, collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's keep moving. Our next item is the use of force, um, review committee. So I don't know if, uh, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Kreswick, are you all with us this evening? Maybe other members as well?
Yes, we are here. Hello, ma'am.
Welcome, welcome. We are so delighted to have you with us this evening and want to thank you, um, for the great work you've done. I know we've heard reports along the way of, uh, the diligence and thoughtfulness and care you've taken with this important topic. So we're very happy to have you with us and look forward to hearing what you have to say. So, um, please, uh, again, welcome and, and, uh, you know, feel free to get started when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Steve, did you want to say anything before we start or can we proceed?
Well, I think we can go ahead and proceed. Uh, I think the committee, I mean, I think council knows, uh, the work that you guys have been doing, how you've been tasked with the work. But I just wanted to say one thing, and that is as the city's liaison, uh, I've really appreciated the opportunity to represent the city council. And I've been greatly impressed by the work, uh, achieved by this committee. So I, I, without further to do, um, Janice, I'll let you and Brian take over.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. And, um, I just wanted to again reintroduce Brian. Um, he is our vice chair. Brian, are you here with us this evening?
Yes, I am, Janice. Good evening.
All right. So together, Brian and I, uh, will be providing the council a very brief, uh, review of the use of force review committee's findings and recommendations. Okay. So we're going to go ahead on to slide two. All right. First of all, on behalf of the entire use of force review committee, um, all of whom you see listed here, we want to thank the council for forming this committee. Uh, not only did you bring together a group of people whose knowledge, skills and experiences proved them very competent and up to the task that you assigned, but you also brought it, brought together a group of people who were willing to express, um, uncomfortable opinions, have uncomfortable conversations and have respect for each other's critiques and input. And, um, even with all of that, we were still able to come to a valid consensus and that consensus, uh, formed the committee's report of findings and recommendations. And that report was provided previously. On a personal level, I want to thank each committee member, and I include Steve and Andrea in that. Um, I want to thank you all for the honor of working with you and for the honor of being your chair. And I congratulate you, uh, for the product that we produced. Uh, we can go ahead to slide three. Okay. So as a reminder, uh, these are the four objectives. Well, there's four and objective number one is divided into A and B. Uh, the objectives were to use, to review the use of force policies and procedures, uh, for the police department and the sheriff's office and review reported instances of uses of force over the current and past five years. Um, was also to engage the community, uh, by collecting, um, experiences and then reporting our findings back to the community. And finally, we finalized our recommendations, uh, to enhance the use of force policies and procedures, which again, we provided to you in a report. Brian, did you have anything you wanted to add or you want to move on to slide three?
I think we're good to move on to slide three. Thank you, Janice.
All right. Go ahead.
So the next couple of slides, the next three slides are going to summarize the content of the report that you all had an opportunity to review, uh, before tonight's meeting. As I spoke, uh, in December, uh, we conducted a fairly comprehensive review against the objectives that Janice just mentioned. The review focused in three particular areas, uh, in each area aligned to, uh, one of the objectives on the prior slide. The first area that we looked at, uh, was the policy and procedure review. Uh, that aligns with objective 1A. In doing that, we looked at 12 different guidance documents. The more, the majority of these were, were general orders out of the police department and sheriff's office. They focused on use of force, but in other areas related to the use of force, such as reporting uses of force, the internal affairs and disciplinary action, uh, guidance, bias, mitigating bias. Uh, and then we also looked broadly at school safety and the rule, uh, the role of the police department and SROs, uh, in providing, uh, a safe school environment. The second thing that we looked at, uh, aligned with objective 1B, that was the review of, of use of force incidents. Uh, the scope of this review, uh, was for the current year and the previous five years. So that took us back to January 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2020. We reviewed all uses of force that occurred within the city of Falls Church. What we learned in that review is that only the police department had had a reported use of force to date. So the, the uses of force that we looked at pertained only to the police department since the sheriff's office had no incidents to date. In doing that review, we, we did a quantitative analysis of trends as well as a qualitative review of the incident reports for, for other observations. An important note on the review of incident reports is that we didn't re-interrogate the cases. We didn't readjudicate the findings. We were merely looking at the data associated with those incidents and the description of those incidents to see if we saw any trends or any notable opportunities for improvement. The third area that we looked at was community engagement. Given the circumstances with COVID, we decided to develop Given the circumstances with COVID, we decided to develop and publish a public survey online. There were 15 core questions in that survey, looking to capture community members' perceptions, experiences, et cetera, with use of force, the police department and sheriff's office. We did ask five demographic questions, and ultimately advertised that survey out through multiple forums. We posted through the city's website, we looked at social media forums like LinkedIn and Facebook, even had a notice in the news press. The survey was open for a couple of weeks. We did conduct a follow-up session and collected some public feedback on the findings that we had from the survey. And again, similar to the incident review, we conducted a quantitative analysis of the data, as well as a qualitative review of the input that we received on the survey. Our hope is that in looking at these three areas, readers of the report would see that the committee did a fairly comprehensive effort and was able to triangulate findings against different areas of the things that we looked at. On the next slide, we summarize our findings. I'll go through these at a high level and then move to the next slide on recommendations. As you read in the report, there was a lot of findings, there was a lot of data, and so I just want to go through this at a high level and then open it up for questions after the presentation. The main hope that the committee has in our discussions of findings and recommendations is that there'll be a balanced perspective on what we found. We found that the police department and sheriff's office do a lot of things very well. We also found some opportunities for improvement. And our hope is that those that read this report and those that walk away, that they don't overstate the good, and that they don't overstate the bad or only look at the bad. I think as a committee, we did a fantastic job of showing both the good and the bad, and then providing a path forward through recommendations. In looking at the findings under the policy and procedure review, we collected 228 unique comments amongst the committee. Those were outlined in Appendix A, a fairly thorough review of the policies and procedures. We found that many of the findings in those documents were the same for the police department and the sheriff's office. There was a lot of commonality between the general orders, and so if we found something in the police department order, oftentimes it also applied to the sheriff's office. Across those 228 comments, we had two types of results. The first was basic content revisions to the orders, those essentially focused on making changes to minimize misinterpretation, reducing opportunities to deviate from the guidance if someone read it. We didn't want them to have a whole lot of flexibility in how they followed the guidance. We were very focused on enhancing accountability and aligning disciplinary action to noncompliance with the orders, and then increasing consistency across the orders. So that was the first area that resulted from those 228 comments. The second was a set of common themes that addressed systemic opportunities or opportunities that addressed more than one comment, and those ultimately became recommendation topics that were laid out in section four of your report, and we'll go through those in a minute. The second area that we looked at, the incident reviews, we looked at 113 incidents. We do note that 86 entailed humans, persons. The way that the city captures uses of force, if there is a euthanizing of an animal, that counts as a use of force. And so of the 113 incidents, 27 of those had to do with wildlife situations. All of the incident reports were outlined in Appendix B of the report, so that readers could have a nice opportunity to see the nature of the incidents, the demographics of those involved, the type of force that was used and the outcome of that use of force. What we found in looking at those uses of force was that all were conducted within guidelines. And as I mentioned on the prior slide, the committee did not attempt to reinterrogate or readjudicate those cases. And so as a major finding, we found that all of the incidents were conducted within guidelines, as assessed by the internal affairs process. In terms of quantitative trends, again, we looked at the incident data to see if there were any statistical trends. These begin on page 10 of the report, and the first bullet that I have here is that the committee didn't find anything unusual or didn't determine that there was much unusual in terms of incidents by gender and race. And so what does that, what does that mean? When you look at the findings in the report, you'll see that about 77% of the incidents involved males, about 20% involved females, about 69% involved white individuals, about 23% involved black individuals. We didn't take away from that analysis that there was a vast imbalance, or that we saw something that we didn't necessarily expect to see based on the makeup of our city and the surrounding area. There were no incidents that involved deploying a firearm or ECD, so no guns were shot, no pistols, no rifles were shot, except in the cases of the wildlife euthanasia. And so I should have mentioned that the qualitative trends focus only on the human instances, so only those 86 instances. There was no situation that involved deploying a firearm or an ECD on a human. And as you would see in Appendix B, the majority of, the vast majority of the incidents resulted in no injury or only a very minor injury. The qualitative observations that we took away essentially supported many of the recommendations and recommendation topic areas that we saw in the policy and procedure review, and we'll talk about those on the next slide. The third area, the community engagement, we had 393 responses to the survey. That brought with it 858 open text comments. So for each of the 15 core questions, we asked a Liker scale question, rate your opinion on X, and then we provided an opportunity for the respondent to provide a comment on their response, so 858 in total. Again, generally positive perspective of law enforcement, a slightly more negative perspective when we filtered by demographic. So two things on that point. One thing the committee was very focused on was making sure that we didn't marginalize the input of any particular population. And so what we did with the survey, and you'll see this in Appendix D of the report, is that we filtered the survey for respondents that self-identified as being from a minority population or self-identified as not wanting to specify their race or ethnicity. And so that gave us a slightly different lens to look at the survey data through. And so in the aggregate, for all survey responses, a generally positive perspective, when filtered by minority population or those not providing that demographic information, slightly more negative. And so what does, what does that mean? These results begin on page 12 of the report. When you look at the aggregated responses across 393 respondents, about 4.1% rated the professionalism of the police officers as poor or very poor. So about 4% of all respondents said poor or very poor. When we filtered it for minority populations, that percentage increased to about 7.3%. And so not editorializing on the magnitude of that increase, just saying that there was a slightly higher percentage that viewed the professionalism as poor or very poor. And similarly, in the sheriff's office, on the aggregate, 2.4% viewed the professionalism as poor or very poor in the aggregate, about 3.75% on the minority populations. And so that's a really important thing for readers of the report to take a look at, just to grasp what that survey data is telling us. The other interesting nugget on the survey was that most folks that responded had not experienced or witnessed a use of force, and so we wanted to make sure that that was put out there as well. We did receive very strong comments, and so it's important to note that the survey findings and recommendations were not based entirely on the quantitative data, that we did look at each of the 858 open text comments, and many of the opportunities for improvement relative to the community survey came from that qualitative review. It came from looking at the strong feelings and comments and stories and perspectives of our community members. Moving on to the next slide, we'll go into recommendations, and I'll turn this back over to Janice, and then we'll sort of tag team as we go through the 10 recommendation areas that are in section four of the report.
Okay. All right, thanks, Brian. Okay, so the first recommendation, defining the core values, pertains to making clear the direction of the use of force policies within the Falls Church City Police Department and Sheriff's Office, in terms of establishing citizen review boards that are consistent with best practices. And defining the core values. The second recommendation, improving oversight to ensure transparency, deals more with implementing an independent review system for instances of uses of force, as opposed to having these functions rest within the agency. That way, there's transparency and it also builds trust. Anything you wanted to add so far, Brian?
On recommendation area two, this was one of the areas that drove a lot of the early conversation within the committee. As it sits today, probably by necessity or as a function of resources, the internal affairs process sits within the police department. And so as soon as, as practical, I believe, is how we wrote it in the report, as soon as reasonably practical, the committee would recommend that that be moved into a separate organization outside the chain of command. And then, as Janice mentioned, implementing a citizen review board to provide a community perspective or third-party perspective on incidents is a major recommendation of the committee.
Recommendation number three, enhancing the community education and relationship between, and the relationship between the community and law enforcement. This particular recommendation is meant to build trust among the community, particularly those within the minority population, and that's consistent with what the overall objective was to establish in this committee. Recommendation number four, providing better support for the special circumstances and vulnerable populations. And in essence, this is populations who are suffering mental disabilities and challenges, and students. The overall thought here is that when, that police officers and deputies would be trained to respond to instances of uses of force or instances that involve these vulnerable populations, and that there will also be mental health professionals available to respond to these calls as well. And this was, to tag on to what Brian said earlier, this is one of the areas that we pulled directly from the comments that the community provided to us and the experiences that the community provided to us. Brian, did you want to say anything about that?
Just to reemphasize there what you said, I think three and four, these two recommendations were a direct result of the survey process. And so sometimes it's hard to gather when you're looking at a document, or if you're looking at an incident report, what is the community feeling of what happened there? And clearly, the community is looking for not just more education about law enforcement, but a two-way street, building a better relationship with law enforcement, making sure the community understands the roles and functions of the sheriff's office and the police department, but similarly, that the sheriff's office and police department understand the challenges and issues that have been dealt with or the community is facing. And similarly, with those special circumstances, an officer that's trained to respond to a standard incident may need more support or different support if that incident involves someone who has a special circumstance or is a member of a vulnerable population.
And that rolls right into recommendation number five, in terms of establishing a police-affiliated critical incident process. The recommendation focuses on police officers and deputies who do respond to these instances of use of force needing more assistance and direction after the incident, and more mental health, I guess, more mental health, lust for words, more mental health input based on having been involved in issues of force. The overall consensus is that officers and deputies who are traumatized on whatever level may go on to traumatize others and thereby put the, put the community in additional danger, and who, they also need assistance and direction. And I know, Brian, can you clear that up for me? I know I messed that up.
No, that's good. That's good. Number five is something that was felt very strongly by both members of, both sides of our committee, both the law enforcement side as well as the community members. And it really just goes to the trauma that results as a function of use of force incidents. And so a police officer that might be involved in a significant incident experiences trauma. And as a result of that, there could be post-traumatic symptoms, there could be mental health challenges. And so what the police-affiliated critical incident process does is it provides some guidance around ensuring that the law enforcement culture is aware and understanding of the mental health aspects of what's going on here. But then, as Janice mentioned, similarly, on the community side, that as a result of that process, law enforcement officers aren't out in the community before they're ready, and therefore, the community is better protected.
Yeah, the idea is that police officers, that where we treat police officers and the way that we care for them will ultimately support the policies and the culture that we've established, and will also safeguard the community. So this is an important area. Number six, recommendation number six, ensuring adequate resources to successfully implement use of force recommendations. What's interesting about this particular recommendation is that it was born out of the fact that apparently the police department has not seen an increase in officers or positions since, I believe, 1970, and yet the criterias and mandates that were put on the police department and the sheriff's office has greatly increased. And so our recommendation here includes hiring additional training staff and hiring additional officers or law enforcement or management staff that would assist in implementing the Recommendation number seven, standardizing the need for audio and visual evidence. In essence, actually, what's interesting about this is that we were pleased to see that, I guess, in the news last week, the news press reported last week, that the agencies are considering body-worn cameras. Well, this particular recommendation included was born out of that. And we were, we as a committee, and I can speak for the committee on that, and that we are very happy to have seen this. This was a discussion that really concerned us in terms of cost and whether or not that would be something that the agencies would be able to do. But also, keeping in mind that best practices nowadays are that officers are wearing body cameras, and I'm happy to see that the city is trying to move towards that. You want to add anything, Brian?
Just on that recommendation in particular, I would be nuanced in the recommendation that we provided.
Yeah.
In reading that recommendation, what the committee is recommending is that the city police department do a study on the use of body cameras. I think the caveat that I would take with what was put in a couple of reports, the committee is not recommending with full force that the city adopt body cameras.
Right.
While many of the committee members think that it is the right direction to go, we do realize that there's fiscal and operational impacts that go with that. And so the first piece of that recommendation is to do a study, determine feasibility, determine impact, and if it seems reasonable, push forward with it in the following year.
Yep, and we are so happy to see that it's moving in that direction. So thank you, council, and thank you, agency. So thank you, council, and thank you, agencies, in advance. Recommendation number eight, clarifying when it is acceptable to use prohibited tactics as last resort. So just to let everyone know, those tactics at this point are trachea holes, carotid artery holes, baton strikes to the head or face. And what the committee acknowledges is that there will be times when officers will have to use these tactics, which are considered prohibited to save their lives, the lives of others, the lives of community members. But what we're also saying is that policies need to offer guidelines to the officers so that they understand when it is appropriate to use these tactics. Recommendation number nine, implementing systems to facilitate managing policies and procedures. This is pretty straightforward. What we're saying here is that the systems that are in place now just need to be, I'd use the word "modernized," so that use of force policies and incidences are recorded and tracked more consistent with best practices and that the data is able to be captured a little more accurately, and that the information will be able to be more transparent, and so that when someone does call for it or someone within the community asks for it, it's something that is readily accessible. Anything you want to add, Brian?
No, nothing special on the last three here, Janice. These are a bit more administrative in terms of the recommendations, so I think they're fairly straightforward.
Yeah, and the last being recommendation number 10, expanding information to capture and retain and retention of personnel involved in uses of force. And essentially what we're saying here is that documentation regarding the participation of officers and deputies in instances of uses of force, the length of time that data is made available should be reviewed. Okay? We can go on to the last slide. Okay, and these are our moving forward recommendations. And essentially what we're saying is that all of the information, all of the data that we share, be shared publicly. All of the information that we've collected be shared publicly in terms of the report, and that we're recommending that the council come back and report to the community their any progress that has been made in the recommendations that we've put forward. Above all, we're requesting that, we're acknowledging that there may be budgetary constraints, personnel constraints, that might prohibit all of our recommendations that we feel are very important and very relevant, that these recommendations may not be able to be put forth immediately. So what we did was, we went back and we looked and we said, okay, these are the areas that we would recommend that where possible, if possible, the council put as a priority. And those are listed here, listed there as, let's see, prioritizing the implementation of oversight and accountability, personnel and training, and special circumstances and vulnerable populations. Anything else, Brian?
No, that's great. I think as a committee, we were excited to provide recommendations, to do the analysis. It was speaking for myself, but I think for other council members, a very rewarding and fulfilling experience since August of last year. And we did feel as though, in providing the recommendations, our job was done, that was the end of our charter. And so we're providing a few thoughts here in terms of moving forward, and this would be for Mr. Shields, for Chief Gavin, for Sheriff Kay, and for council's consideration. Hopefully, the report is accepted and is appreciated, and in the next year, we'll see some progress. And we do encourage, although we don't have the authority to require, we do encourage regular communications moving forward and perhaps a status update on implementation progress toward the end of next year. I think with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Questions.
All right, well, listen, first off, let me just thank you again, this report, and I'm sure many of the members of the public are not aware, it is voluminous, it is well-thought-out, it is documented, and it's clear that you all took this work very seriously, as we on council do as well. So we appreciate this work product, this discussion, this necessary and important conversation we're having tonight that you have led the charge in these past months, that is so reflective of our city's values and so important for us moving forward. So before I open up to questions, I would like to give the chief and the sheriff, if they're on the line, a chance to offer any additional thoughts they might have. And so if either one are on the call, I'd be happy to recognize either one or both of you all.
Hi, Mayor Tardis, this is Mary Gavin, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to express my thanks to you, sir, and council for spearheading this group. And then also Wyatt Shields for assisting me and getting some of the city employees involved that kind of formulated this group, and then only to be pleasantly pleased with the community members that came together, that you all selected, humbled by their expertise and their passion to getting this done. Where I've read the whole report, I'd like to get into depth with it and try to strategize around it, but I can tell you, it's a gift, it's a gift to the police department. There are certainly some things that we're going to take immediate action on and can formulate culture. I believe we have a good culture, but I think we can always have a better culture. And some very easy things that we can do, I've stood up a reform group within the department several months ago, in the recent months, and they'll be working on these recommendations in the next several months, and we'll report out. What I'd like to just say is, as far as the, you know, when we started down this path after March 25th, when George Floyd was killed, you know, this profession needed dire change. And one of the things that me and Mr. Shields talked about was it was our time to listen as a profession, it wasn't our time to react, it was to listen to our community and hear the pain. And with listening comes connection and hopefully some healing. But definitely right now, we have heard what they have to say, they have a comprehensive report that we welcome and will take action with. And I just need a little bit of time to strategize on the things that we can take action on now and the things that we need to strategize with budget as we move forward. So again, to Janice and Brian, I thank you for this report, it is invaluable to us because it's Falls Church. We can listen to all the national conversations and even the legislative changes through the state, but this is probably one of the most valuable reports that we could have here for the police department, and I dare say the sheriff's office as well. And with that, I'll hand it over to Matt Kay.
All right, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mary, thank you, Mayor, members of council, and everyone present here. Well, you know, when I started with the committee, I had not assumed the office of the sheriff, so it was a very fulfilling experience for me, but in the beginning, there was definitely a commitment of all the members to have candid conversations, transparency about our thoughts, and the police department, the sheriff's office, providing all of our general orders that were requested, and to very candidly discuss what the situation was in light of the incidences of last year. It was an incredibly collaborative experience for me, I learned a lot, and I think we all learn from each other, and I think the report speaks for itself with regard, as you pointed out, Mayor, how extensive this interpretation and evaluation was, and how every effort was made to not leave any rock unturned. So I think everyone on the committee is very proud, Janice's leadership as the chair, and Brian's efforts with regard to the report, and his efforts as a vice chair, as well as all the contributions of everyone on the committee, including non-law enforcement, law enforcement. It was, again, a very, very incredible experience on my behalf. One of the many things I learned was that actually when people get together and have these uncomfortable conversations, good can come of it, and good has come of it with regard to this report. And as the chief pointed out, it is time for law enforcement to modernize itself, modernize how we do things, and then ensure that our procedures and protocols are consistent with 21st century policing methods. And one of the issues that we're implementing here is there is mandatory training that is going to be required of our deputies with regard to crisis intervention, de-escalation, access to non-lethal approaches in dealing with situations, as well as deputy accountability and training to reinforce knowledge and compliance with community standards and what the expectations are of law enforcement. And again, these are attainable goals, we have taken a big step forward here, and we just need to maintain the momentum and the commitment to the process. And another additional outcropping of this procedure was that the police department and the sheriff's office have, in essence, developed a use-of-force approach that is consistent. And this is obviously a requirement when you have a jurisdiction such as ours, where you have two law enforcement agencies that work very closely together and assist each other, and in our capacity of assisting the police department often end up on calls and other events and serious events together. So it's essential that the police department and the sheriff's office have the same approach to situations that involve any use of force or behavior of officers with regard to the public. So I have committed my agency to ensuring that this consistency and uniformity is established. And fortunately, given the cooperation that exists between our agencies, between myself and the chief, and her reaching out to our agency and promoting this process, this has been an incredibly positive situation, and in conjunction with the efforts of the committee, I think we are really moving in a very positive and productive direction with regard to law enforcement. But the one thing we need to continue to do is to ensure that we receive input about how we're doing, to continually modify and make better our efforts to do the best possible job we can with regard to everyone in our community, and even people that come into our community from months outside. So again, thank you very much for every member of the committee for all their efforts. It was a long slog here, but we did it. We have an incredible report, thank you, council members for permitting us to do this, and permitting us to explore this situation and come up with these solutions that we intend on working upon. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up to questions. Do any members of council have any questions or comments? Looks like we've got a few, so we're going to start with Ms. Hiscott, followed by Ms. Hardy, and then Ms. Conley, Vice Mayor Conley. Ms. Hiscott?
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank everybody who stood up this committee and supported this committee along the way, and thank each and every person involved for the process, and specifically the product, which was quite comprehensive and enlightening to those of us who weren't participants in the committee itself. So much great information there. And thank you to the chief and the sheriff for acknowledging that there's a lot to take in and a lot to figure out how to incorporate, and I just wanted to iterate my support for future budget requests that will be likely needed in order to make a lot of these things happen, and I think this has just got to be one of our top priorities in Falls Street City. So thanks again to the committee, and thanks to the chief and the sheriff, and I look forward to hearing how you all can envision incorporating a lot of these suggestions, and how the council can support you from a financial and operational perspective. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hardy, followed by Vice Mayor Conley.
Thank you. I will echo my thanks, I think overall your output was just really, really impressive. So thank you, Janice and Brian, for all the work, and please pass on our thanks to the rest of the committee members. I think we knew that when we were selecting members that we really had a super impressive group, and you all clearly have delivered. One question, and then some general comments. Given that you all looked at the 113 use-of-force incidents over five years, is that comparable for what we'd expect for kind of a population of our size, on par with what we'd expect over five years, or is that below what other jurisdictions? Maybe that's more of a question for the chief.
Yeah, I can say, Ms. Hardy, we did not do a comparative analysis on the volume of incidents per year against other localities of comparable size. I think if you look at the Section 2.2, where we describe the approach for the incident reports, you do see a pretty standard distribution of incidents across the years. 2019, there appears to be fewer, with only 12 incidents, and then for 2020, we had 13, but that was only half the year. And so, you know, there seems to be around a 20 incident count per year, and that includes the wildlife included in those numbers as well.
So I have not done a comparison regionally, I can certainly do that. I do believe that there is probably some differences on how we report use of force versus how others may, so there might be a difference in the numbers. On average, I did the average based on what we have before us, and on average, we have 18 reported uses of force each year, up to 25, and I guess the least number, like Brian had said, was 12, and that wasn't a full year. But each and every one is looked at and scrutinized, certainly there is, I'm excited about the recommendations and changing the process, and doing it a little differently and doing it better, and having a transparent report out to the community on that. But that's something I definitely can follow up on in terms of comparison.
I think it would just be helpful benchmark to kind of know, you know, are we seeing comparable to what kind of the region might. Kind of related to that is, I know part of the impetus for forming this, besides the murder of George Floyd, was the eight can't wait kind of police reform recommendations. How do these 10 recommendations map to those ones? I know some of them, when we looked at them, we already had been doing and implemented in the police, do we think that these map pretty well, or there are still some on the table that weren't really in scope?
Some overlap, definitely overlap, but this gets more to specifics on our policies and how we can refine our policies to match up with eight can't wait, but also in terms of how to build the infrastructure within the organization to support all the number of things that have to do with eight can't wait, or the use of force, or defensive tactics, or trust within the community. So they do overlap, but they're not aligned completely, and I never expected them to align completely. I think, you know, I don't want to get in too many hashtags, because sometimes we miss some of the, you know, I do believe culture, and I think Janice is the one that brought it up first, was culture is a huge, it's an everyday, finger-on-the-pulse type of worry that a chief has as to, you know, how we're going about policing, and making sure with each legislative change, every major incident or watershed moment that happens in the nation or in the state or in our community, that we're examining it and making sure those officers understand the values moving forward. So not so much, I'm not so convinced that some of the hashtag or the movements of capture all of that in terms of culture, it really is about having the right policies in place, having the right training, and having leadership that steps in the gap when it's hard, and making sure we're making changes, much like having leadership that steps in the gap when it's hard and making changes, much like has been suggested here. Eight can't wait is a great framework. The Obama's 21st century policing is a great framework. And as I have said before, we did a deep dive within our department to look at all of the aspects of our department as to how we could approve them. That was in 2015. And, you know, Falls Church has a lot of brilliant people to include this task force, but also the co-author of the 21st century policing framework came from Falls Church. So, you know, we've got a lot of things that we can do better, and we'll incorporate them all. But it does overlap.
Okay. So in that spirit of kind of continuous improvement, chief, thank you. Thank you to you and the sheriff for being at the table and also being welcoming. I will echo what Debbie said is, I think it's appropriate that obviously the budget follows this as a priority, right? So it's great to have a set of recommendations, but it's nothing if it sits on the shelf. And so the ones that jumped out for me in particular is we've talked about CIT training and how to get your staff fully there.
Sure.
I think we've talked about body cams, probably not in scope of this, but I think there's interest on council is more automated traffic enforcement, especially if that helps remove more human interaction and bias and actually has a benefit, actually helping more traffic calming. That's something I think that you'll find support for council on. So let us know as the budget process comes up how we can support you, because I want to make sure that the work doesn't stop here with a great report. We got to make sure that the money follows the priority.
Absolutely. There's a lot of moving parts in the budget and strategy that we have to take into account with the number of changes or challenges before us. Obviously, people is a really important factor. You know, where these automated photo enforcement programs are good, it still takes an officer to look at each and every violation, and that takes them off the street. So where it is automatic, it's not without an officer looking in each and every one. So we're looking at strategies and ways of doing that better. But, you know, I'm excited about this. We have a lot of opportunity to make great changes and meet a lot of challenges that we have ahead.
Thank you. I like your suggestion of kind of taking this work and then coming up with kind of how to strategize and implement it. So kind of a short, medium, long-term plan of how to take all these recommendations and operationalize it. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Conley?
I will echo the thanks from my colleagues and agree with Ms. Hiscott and Ms. Hardy that the funding needs to follow the recommendations and that we should definitely make sure we implement these in a logical way that fits into our budget and also is responsive to the needs. I just want to call out two things that I think are really important in this report, and one is that the police and the sheriff work together. One of my concerns going into this was ensuring that all of our uniformed officers were on the same page. And I think this went a long way towards that. And I'm really glad to see that that collaboration is occurring, because when things happen in the community, people don't know if they're dealing with the police officer or sheriff half the time. And it makes sense that your guidelines and training are all related and tied together. So I appreciate that. And my second kudo, and I was just paging through and I can't find it, but I saw it earlier, is just appreciation for working in conjunction with the schools, because that intersection between schools and juveniles and the police department and sheriff is, you know, always fraught. And it's really good that Sevi Padilla was able to be on this committee and work with everyone and share the school's perspective. And I do hope that this is shared with the school board and the school leadership so that they also have an opportunity to review and consider, because, you know, many of the citizens in the schools are the same citizens that are all of the citizens in the schools, are that are dealing with the police department and sheriff's department as well. So I would make that request, that this does go to the school board and the school leadership. But thank you very much, and I'm really glad that this is a document that has many useful recommendations and so much time and effort and so many people's expertise put into it. So thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
So first of all, I want to emphasize the findings that it really has been an extraordinary work by the police department that didn't start last year, and that this community as a whole, prior councils, the leadership and the rank and file of the police and sheriff's department have been paying attention to these issues over many years. That said, there's always room for review and improvement, and the commission has certainly done that. One of the areas that I'm interested in, and I found this out when I met with the internal review by our police and sheriff's department, was the situation where an officer can be taken off the street for eight hours or more, because when they take a mental health patient to a facility, they have to stay with that person. So this is a kind of operational review now that I want to take a look at. How can we free our officers of this kind of extensive delay, if you will, so that they can get back out on the street where frankly they want to be and where we want them to be, as well as looking at increased numbers and increased support of one way or another? And I'll be interested, too, as we study the use of body cams, what the data, the issues are, and how a small city can manage that. So we'll see about that, as to how that unfolds. And I'll be interested to review all of that. But to the group, really a phenomenal body of work. It shows that the most difficult issues can be dealt with in a collaborative fashion and that we can move forward together. And I think we're all committed to continuing to do that. So thanks again to everyone involved.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Brian, Janice, thank you, guys. I know that folks have been effusive in their praise here, but I did take the opportunity over the weekend to read that entire 189-page report. And I got to tell you, I was really taken aback by the thoughtfulness of the report. And I think, probably speak for a lot of folks, it's been a pretty rough 12 months in a lot of ways. And I think for many of us, it's been a challenge to keep our chin up in light of some of the, I would say, the discourse in kind of the broader national community. And this particular report, for me, I think it made me proud of the community, and not just of the effort that you guys put into it, but it also made me proud of what our law enforcement here, both sheriff and police department, how they carry themselves. And I think, Brian, you made a good point that, you know, you don't want to overstate the good and you also don't want to overstate the bad. I mean, I was left, after reading this report, thinking that, yes, of course, there are always ways that we can improve. And you guys did an amazing job at outlining exactly what those recommended changes would be, as well as the outcomes. But I think it just goes to show that there are communities around this country that can serve as, probably the best way to describe it, are role models for other communities in the way that our law enforcement personnel carry themselves here in this community and how it can be done in others. So it was, for me, it was not only enlightening and also incredibly helpful, but it was, again, it was a source of pride for me, personally at least. I do, just specifically in some of the recommendations, I appreciate you guys pointing out the mental health aspect. That was a concern that I have, and I feel that, you know, law enforcement, one of the biggest kind of audibles that they have to deal with when they're out there, you know, dealing with calls or dealing with mental health issues. And so it was great that you guys called that out. And then also the community relations. And again, this is another area where I think we can always improve, and improving those community relations with law enforcement. So I appreciate you guys doing that. One specific thing that I did want to point out, and this came from a conversation I had with some of the folks in the police department during that internal review, was just the amount of time that our law enforcement personnel spend being pulled off task by various issues. And Councilmember Snyder mentioned a couple of those, but specifically dealing with lost dogs, wildlife, things like that. I feel that from a budgetary and a resource allocation perspective, I think that that's one of the things that council can probably help solve for, just making sure that we're putting resources in the right place. And I think making sure that, you know, if we need additional resources to have folks deal with some of the more ancillary issues, to allow our law enforcement personnel to do the job with kind of their core competency, that we should consider that. And then the last thing I'll say is that, and I think other folks have mentioned this, it's an incredibly detailed report, and it is up to council for us to make sure that this report wasn't put together in vain. That's going to require some budgetary considerations. And I think it's important for us to continue to carry the torch there. But generally speaking, guys, I am just incredibly impressed at the detail and thoughtfulness of this report. And it's, I mean, it is a virtual roadmap. And so thank you, guys, for really rising to the occasion and putting together just a really, really impressive report. So thank you, guys, again, and thanks for helping, at least from my perspective, restoring the faith in humanity to some extent in many ways. I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the committee for this incredibly detailed forensic-level examination of our department, and appreciate the sheriff and the chief's greeting the information in it as an exciting opportunity to meet our challenges. That's a good way to put it. What I'm trying to square, will be trying to square, and I'm hopeful that the committee will remain very involved in advising us as we go through our budget process, is squaring, you know, what you've identified as the situation here with what is going on in Richmond and nationally, and, you know, some really key areas. And I'll just mention three. One would be the size of the force. As I see what you've suggested here, we're not keeping pace with population growth in terms of the size of our police force. Yet, you know, the Richmond and certainly national commentary is often about, you know, the police resources or size of force being too large. So I'd like to figure out how to square that. Second would be the whole notion of traffic stops. Ms. Hardy referred to, you know, using technology, but the chief said, you know, there's still a role to play for, you know, cops on the street. You know, what we hear a lot of here, what we heard tonight earlier, was, you know, we don't care what color you are, white, black, red, brown, green, yellow, we don't want you speeding through Falls Church. And we want people to be pulled over and given tickets, and we expect a high level of enforcement here, again, at a time when pulling folks over is, well, it's a matter of some discussion and controversy. And finally, I guess, the school resource officer question. Again, you know, we hear from some quarters that we need to get the police out of the schools. I don't think that that's my personal opinion or the community's opinion, but ahead into the budget season, you know, those are just three areas that have clear budget implications that I'll be, you know, relying on you all to advise us as a way to understand what we think our community wants out of our law enforcement. But a great job, great report, and I appreciate all the time you've devoted to it and look forward to further conversations. Thanks.
All right. And I will wrap up with, again, echoing those thanks and just affirming that this report is not an end unto itself, but actually a beginning, the beginning of implementing and the like. So we view this, or I view this, as a living document that we will be, the chief, the sheriff, and the community as a whole be looking to going forward. But as I said earlier, also, I believe this is a reaffirmation reflective of our values as a community, to continue to strive to do better. No matter how we are doing, we can always be better. And also just getting a broader perspective on what we do and making sure all voices are heard. So I think this has been an invaluable exercise for a lot of reasons. So once again, our thanks to all of you, and we continue to hope to work further together and to keep moving forward. So thank you all. All right, Mr. Shields, let's move on to the next item, which is, actually, we're at council request. Are there any council requests? All right, how about the report of the city manager? Then we're going to take a break here around 9:30. So looks like we do have a hand up. Ms. Hardy?
Sorry, I couldn't get my hand up in time when you were asking for requests. I had a couple. Mr. Shields, in light of the beginning of our meeting, when we acknowledged that we've surpassed 500,000 deaths of COVID in the United States, I was wondering whether we'd be willing to lower our flags at half-mast this week?
Yes. So thank you for noting that. President Biden and Governor Northam have both ordered flags to be lowered immediately through sunset on Friday this week to honor those we've lost to COVID and their families and those who are grieving their loss. So we will do that tomorrow, and we would like to do so with some solemn ceremony. And so we will spread word on how we'll best do that tomorrow morning, when we would normally raise the American flag as we do every morning. So I'll follow up with the council just on the arrangements for that, but we will certainly be doing that tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And my second one had to do with the noise ordinance, which I know we have on our agenda in two weeks. I think over, last week, we had talked about, over email, organizing a field trip for council to visit some of our neighboring businesses with the police department and noise meter. I was wondering whether we have something, a potential date on the calendar that we could get out to folks?
So we will get that out to council, and I think we'll try to do it, you know, in two, so we don't necessarily have to have a public meeting. The weather is supposed to warm up this week, and with some sunny skies and temperatures in the high 50s. So I expect there probably will be some live entertainment outdoors, and so we will just work with council to do this in an organized way so that, I think the purpose of it would be just so that the policymakers can see on the ground how the decibel meter works, what the limits are in the city code, and how they're measured by that device, and possibly make some judgments there based on kind of what that experience is like at the property line. That would be the intent, and so we'll make arrangements with council members and just let others know that we're doing this just to gather information prior to council's public hearing and final consideration of amendments to the noise ordinance, which is currently scheduled for March 8.
Great, thank you. And my last request is, I think there's certainly palpable excitement among the school community of returning to school this week. And so I wanted to make sure that, obviously, our police is probably aware that we'll have a lot more walkers and pedestrians out there in several shifts, since we'll have some AM/PM ones for the elementary kids. And so traffic will look pretty different around the little city this coming week. And then on that note, we've been talking about masks and what we can do on our part to kind of help make sure that community transmission stays low. So, Mr. Shields, I was wondering whether we have any official parks and recs, I guess, recommendations on our mask policy going forward?
Well, we do have, you know, this formal, you know, the policies that we're carrying out that all stem from the governor's executive orders and our public health directors. And so, as we've discussed earlier, it is our expectation with those who participate in our programs that they will wear a mask. But we'll do so in, you know, in conjunction with, you know, the best advice from our public health experts on that. And so that is ongoing.
Can we make sure that, to emphasize kind of the mass expectations with people who are registering? I know that we have registration for sports through the end of the month. It'd be great to kind of make sure everyone is on the same page about it.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder, then Mr. Duncan, or then Mr. Vice Mayor Conley. Mr. Snyder?
Sure. So I want to continue the discussion on the availability of vaccines and the vaccine rollout, which continues to be rugged at best. and the vaccine rollout, which continues to be rugged at best. And I'm wondering whether we should reconsider our relationship with the Fairfax Public Health Department. But most importantly, where lies the problem? And what can we do to resolve it? I see huge amounts of money spent because vaccines are not available to folks. Businesses are closed. People are concerned about returning to their daily lives. To me, I have one major focus with regard to the pandemic after mourning the loss, which is to prevent more losses. And the number one way to do that, of course, in addition to the stopgap, so, social distancing and mask wearing is to get the vaccines out. And yet, as I talk to citizens, no one between 65 and 75 seems to be able to get vaccinated. And yet, I know that that recommendation is for that, that communications are rugged. People have to drive long distances to get vaccine, vaccinated even when they can. The whole thing, from my view, is an unacceptable situation. So I want to emphasize that again. And I raise it in every opportunity that I have. So I would like some sort of a report, again, on a regular basis and what more we can do to improve things. Is it money? Is it advocacy? What is it? Second point I want to raise is that the Council of Governments has a task force, the board for the Council of Governments has a task force thinking about and reviewing DC statehood. And I think this should be an all council discussion. So at some point in the fairly near future, I ask for a discussion and briefing so that when I go in to represent the city at the Council of Governments Board of Directors, I'm representing the city and, and the city council. Thanks much for both of those, the important issues, the opportunity to raise them.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Two quick things. One, following up on what Ms. Hardy said about masks. The Falls Church girls' basketball team won the state championship this weekend, and I think that is worthy of note. The girls were playing in the third level and they really did well. But they were one of the few teams that wore masks in every competition all season long. So they are really remarkable role models for our younger kids and younger families. And I just wonder if there's a way to do something kind of cute and catchy about, hey, look, she won a state championship wearing her mask. And guess what? We're going to make sure that everybody else is also wearing masks and you can do it. So I think that's really important. So congratulations to the girls and we're really, really proud of you and really proud that you followed all those health safety protocols all along. And then my second thing I just wanted to call out is that, and this is really a thank you to Michael Timpain, who is the FCC TV videographer, who worked really closely with the schools on putting out the ribbon cutting video of our new high school. He was amazing, worked so hard, so many hours went into that. And if you didn't have a chance to see it yet, it's on the FCC PS YouTube channel. And I would recommend it.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on now to your report, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Carter, members of council. I'll touch on just a couple of things. And I will just note, I think your point about our mask wearing state champions is an excellent one, and we will be promoting that as, as part of our message for Rec and Parks programs as well as a great positive example. So just a couple of things to note. The planning commission has acted on its recommendation for the CIP. They took that action on Wednesday last week. So I want to thank Cindy and, and staff for work developing that CIP and looking forward to presenting it to the city council on March 8. We did develop our CIP priorities this year with a equity lens in addition to the other things that we always do to prioritize projects. And so we look forward to sharing that with the city council. I want to just, from us, all of city staff offer our congratulations to the school administration on their, the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new high school. I know that all city staff who participated in this are very proud of this achievement and are, send Hardy congratulations to the schools for their successful management of this project, bringing it in on time and on budgets. Very exciting. The, and, and thank you, Vice Mayor Connolly, for noting the good work by Michael Timpain on the, putting that video together. And we can send out the, we've been promoting that link, but it's a wonderful production and so a great example of the work that our, our local public access TV station can do. I want to note for the council that the Economic Development Authority voted to approve the acquisition of 302 Gibson last, at their meeting last week. The purpose of this acquisition is for land banking purposes. And as it's conducting that land banking mission to preserve it as market rate affordable housing. Many people worked hard on that. But I'll just point out Becky Witzman, Val, Jim Snyder, Kieran Bawa, Carol McCoskeri, Nancy Vincent, Dan Lewis, and Susan Finirelli all worked to both get together, get to sort of the program and management of this property together to present that to the EDA at their special meeting and also just to let the public know of this acquisition and the reasons for it. And then lastly, I want to note that the city is joining the government alliance for racial equity. And I want to note that Cindy Mester is the current president of the Virginia Local Government Managers Association. And our professional association did spend a good deal of our conference, our winter conference, learning about ways that we can take positive action to promote equity within our communities and within our organizations. We've got a lot of good practical experience from our peers across the state and, and ways that we're working together to move that forward. And, and also participating with Metropolitan Washington COG and its CAO's Committee on Racial Equity. And so we'll be carrying all those best practices and, and work into our budget discussion also so that the things we are moving forward are adequately supported and we can make good progress on those here in Falls Church. So those are items I wanted to report on tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Shields? All right, what I would suggest, we've been at this two hours, although we haven't started business on the agenda. I still think we should take a break, a five minute break, let everybody recollect themselves and re, re begin, you know, begin again at, at 9:30. How about 9:34? So we do have a busy agenda and a closed session, so, but let's reconvene at 9:34, if that's all right with everyone. All right, so short break, short recess, we'll convene at 9:34. Thank you.
And we are back up. Thank you.
All right, we are reconvened, back in session and ready to get on with business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Yes, for second reading and public hearing tonight, we have TO 21-02, Ordinance to amend ordinances 2009, 2012, 2016, and 2018 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2021 for the general fund, Stormwater Fund, and the capital improvements program funds.
All right, Ms. Bawa, are you speaking to this matter?
Good evening, Mayor Carter and members of the council. So we have for you the second reading and request for a final adoption of this third amendment, budget amendment for the fiscal year, which requests appropriation of CARES Act funding for expenditures that are resulting from the pandemic and appropriation of contributions from the developer on the 301 Broad Street project for neighborhood traffic calming and ADA improvements along Annandale. And also in between, within the fund transfer for Stormwater and General Fund for a couple of projects. There are no changes to this item since the first reading and the discussion at the work session before that. Happy to address any questions that you may have.
All right, before we get to questions, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this matter?
No, we received no public comment.
And no one wishes to speak at this time either?
No.
All right, our first question is from Ms. Hardy.
It'll be a quick one. So last time, we spent a long time discussing appropriating additional $250,000 to the schools. And I think we all generally supported it, but wanted to get more details. Do we have more? Is that going to come in a separate budget amendment?
Yes, at, at this point, we would recommend that this come in a later budget amendment. We have not been able to get a real detailed discussion with the schools. At, at this point, I think they're still kind of working through their, their budget request. So there's no new information to share at this point.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Sure, so following up, the schools did indicate that number was important. They haven't provided us more detail on that, whether it can be less or whatever. So my assumption is we're holding that out in order to make sure that the schools have the resources they need to open as rapidly and safely as possible. Is that my understanding, Mr. City Manager, that there's $250,000 not spent? And that we would hold that pending a specific request from the schools? Is that right?
That's correct. That will not be expended until further action by the city council.
Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt TO 21-02.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Will you call the next item, please?
Yes, we have TR 21-02, Resolution to amend Resolution 2018-37 to change the approved voluntary concessions, community benefits, terms and conditions dated August 10, 2018, to provide for escrow security for the theater use instead of withholding residential certificates of occupancy for the project known as Founder's Row on application by Mill Creek Residential Trust, Founder's Row Holding LLC.
All right, who's doing this, Mr. Shields?
I'll provide a, an introductory summary of this item. And I will note that Gary Fuller has been our staff lead on this. He's on this call. And I believe that a representative of Mill Creek, Joe Muffler, is on this call as well. And so this item is now before the city council for public hearing and for final consideration. The council took action on this just over a month ago for first reading and refer a lot to boards and commissions. Mr. Fuller will note some of the, the board and commission comments that are noted in the staff report. I would just say by way of introduction that due to the great turmoil in the movie industry, the cinema industry, which has resulted in the bankruptcy of the, of the tenant that was planned for the Founder's Row project and which tenant had a signed lease and an executed lease and is now in bankruptcy, that this is a situation where what the city is confronting is, is a macroeconomic problem with cinemas at the current time. There is still, in the entitlements, a requirement that a theater ultimately be in this project. And in all of our conversations with the developer, that is their full intent. What they're asking for is relief on the provision of tying that to holding back 50% of the residential certificates of occupancy and replacing that with an escrow, where the amount that will be used for tenant improvements will be held and controlled by the city until such time as that theater, as a, a new theater operator moves forward with plans to, to build out a theater on the site. I will also note that the city is holding back 20 residential CFOs for the build out of the retail component of the project writ large. That provision in the entitlements is unchanged with this amendment. So the only thing that's being changed is that provision relating to the theater itself. So that is a, a, a quick summary. And let me ask Mr. Fuller if he'd like to add any information from his perspective. And I'll just note also that we have Mr. Muffler on the call to answer any questions as well. Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the, the background in introducing this item. Gary Fuller, Planning Department. So Mill Creek is the developer of the Founder's Row, and they requested amendment to the voluntary concession. So that's the action. And the context of that is a special exception that was previously approved. So as the city manager mentioned, this is in response to economic impacts related to COVID and the effect on commercial businesses and the ability to lease, sign leases. So specifically, as indicated, this request is to provide for a third party escrow for security for the theater use instead of withholding residential certificates of occupancy as this project starts to deliver its residential units this year. The developers provided justification letter. It's previously indicated, it's attachment four. And the texts and the term changes in the voluntary concession reflecting this theater condition, the markup is, is in your attachment nine. It's also included in the staff report and summarized in lines 137 through 178. Generally, since your last meetings, you had a work session on January 19th, and then you had your meeting on the 25th of January in which you decided to have formal consideration of this TR 21-02 and referred it to both the planning commission and the Economic Development Authority for review, recommendation, and then scheduled public hearing, which is the purpose of tonight. You did have a scheduled work session last week on February 16th, and that was canceled due to technical issues at the time. We have, as staff, looked at this and discussed this. And there was some clarification that we wanted to do in regard to the, when the escrow would occur, because it wasn't specific enough on that. So staff has recommended some minor changes to the terminology on that. And, and you'll find that highlighted in your staff report. And that's highlighted in, in lines 120 through 127. And basically, it's a, it's a edit to the existing VCs to reflect that condition where basically the, the owner agrees that no more than 50% of the total residential units will be granted certificates of occupancy until either, and then A is construction of the movie theater tenant improvements or landlord work are substantially underway, or B, the owner has entered to the escrow agreement and deposited the escrow funds as described below. And then it refers to the amount and so forth. And so really, the rest of the, the edits are just the, the administrative text that needs to go along with this change to VC, which is in the context of a special exception amendment. The city clerk had mentioned we had some public comment that was received. We had written information that was provided from three residents on Grove Avenue and Pine Street that indicated their opposition and the issues they had with the idea of the VC changes at this point. In addition, included in your staff report, the the Village Improvement Society, VIPUS, had sent in written comments and were concerned about the proposed change, and it recommended that the city negotiate with the developer to, in a firm way, to resolve and protect the interests of the city. The Planning Commission took this item up and had a public hearing on this at their February 3rd meeting. They had a work session, introduced it, and then they had a public hearing on the 17th and passed a recommendation to approve this resolution unanimously that evening. The Economic Development Authority met on February 2nd and expressed its support for the resolution as well, and the revisions to the Founder's Row Project Theater voluntary concessions. So tonight, staff supports the proposed changes to the theater condition and the suggested minor text changes in relationship to the timing of when the escrow funds would be placed in the third party. And so tonight, staff recommends adoption of TR 21-02. Joe Muffler's here. He's not planning to do a presentation tonight, but both he and I are available for any questions. So I'll turn this back over to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we have had some comment, public comment previously. Is there any additional public comment to this matter?
I have nothing in addition to what I read earlier.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and open it up to questions or comments. Counsel? Anyone have any comments or questions? All right, Ms. Hiscott?
Yes, I have got a couple of questions, and maybe there's some super simple answers that I'm just missing with regard to the escrow. I don't understand that, so the timing of it, I understand. But what happens to the funds that are in escrow should that theater not be built out? Like, what financial benefit is it to the city, or is it just holding those funds from Mill Creek for other usage?
Yeah, it is just for that, Councilmember Hiscott, and so there is not a end date to that escrow. And that is really, that's by intention, so that there's, you know, there's really kind of one purpose of this escrow, and that is to provide, you know, maintain alignment between the city's interest and the developer's interest in delivering a theater in this site.
So it's in perpetuity?
Yes, I mean, I do think probably at some point that, you know, the situation would become untenable for the developer, and if, you know, if things change to such an extent that theaters were not viable for the foreseeable future, then it's possible we'll have another discussion about that at this time. At this point, our expectation is that after COVID subsides, that there will be a strong market for cinemas, and that will be the end result. And that's really what our goal is with this change.
Okay, and then the second question I have, or actually, I was thinking along this line in a Mary Chavez and an email or public comment, asking about a financial review of kind of the best, worst-case fiscal scenario. So if we didn't get the revenue we were looking at for theater, theater tax, et cetera, kind of what, just that best, worst-case financial scenarios. So I think I think that we want to make sure that that's public information as well, that everybody's updated on what that range of things could be. I don't know, Gary, you want to talk about that, or Becky's on?
I could, I mean, yeah, I mean, we can model different commercial uses, but at this point, the theater is still an integral part of this special exception, and nothing tonight is changing that. And so, you know, if we have to revisit that in the future, then that's another special exception, and that would come before you and be debated and discussed thoroughly. And, you know, at that point, you know, we could look at, you know, whatever's being talked about. But at this point, we're moving forward with the theater for the community, and so in absence of that, it would take another special exception to really make any changes or to substitute any kind of different commercial use. So that's really a future discussion.
Well, I guess the way that this is written with an escrow, though, you could be minimizing the revenue that would come, you'd be accepting minimization of the revenue that would come from a theater if if that didn't happen for whatever period of time. So the original idea, obviously, was to have it done at the same time. Both of those revenues would be coming in simultaneously. And so if it doesn't come in, I guess I just want to make sure that we're clear on what revenue expectation there was for that theater, and if it is delayed, well, we know it'll be delayed most likely, but if it is significantly delayed, what does that do to the financial net? I mean, I think part of this exercise is to demonstrate that there's still, that there, a net positive revenue, but to recognize what negatives could, there could be if we don't get that in on time, or if it's delayed significantly, years delayed, or we have to come back to it. Am I asking that?
Yes, so, I mean, we have a fiscal impact model. We could model it in a way that we delay that, and so we could, you know, talk about what the revenues would be based on that, or and so that's, yeah, that's something possible that we could do, of course.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Mr. Shields or Mr. Fuller, I know we've gone around several times on this now, but could you refresh our memories on, I guess, other alternatives that we discussed besides the escrow?
I mean, I think the other option would be other versions of financial incentives to keep the city and the developer aligned in delivering a theater. So other things that were discussed were, you know, smaller numbers of certificates of occupancy and, you know, and financial incentives. That's really what the discussion has been about. You know, either the escrow or retaining certificates of occupancy.
And we thought the escrow was the best way to keep our interests aligned?
Well, we do have the CFOs, remember, for the remainder of the retail. The remainder of the retail is highly dependent upon the theater. I mean, that's always been the model for this project, is to be a theater-anchored retail development. And so the two are, I think, complementary to each other.
So that was actually what I was going to bring up, because I think we haven't spent as much time talking about it. If we scroll to line 180, that does talk about holding back the last 20 residential units until 50% of the tenant improvements are underway, which I do think that clearly the rest of your retail is going to be largely dependent on having an anchor. So I do think that that linkage is important for us to still keep in there. So I'm not hearing other alternate, like, other viable alternatives beyond kind of the escrow or kind of holding back COs. Is that right?
I mean, I think those are the two ways to do it. Early in this discussion, we did talk about other items, but in discussions with the City Council, I think there was a very strong consensus, let's just keep this all focused on ensuring the alignment between the city and the developer to deliver a theater at this location, which is, you know, central to the entitlements to begin with. And so that has been the approach. You know, and so I'm referring to other things such as, you know, increasing affordable housing or other community benefits. We had some initial thinking along those lines, but at the end of the day, we kept this really focused on just trying to solve this specific problem. And, so that's, you know, the approach that we're recommending.
Okay, last question. So given that we have not changed the concession, that we still are requiring a theater here, we feel that city interests are still largely protected unless we come back for another amendment, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and to be frank, I mean, the city, it is, the comments that we're receiving that the city is, will have less leverage for the movie theater after this amendment than we do today are correct. Having those CFOs is an entirely appropriate incentive, stick, whatever you want to call it, for a developer that might, for their own reasons, be balking at the theater. That's not the case here. The developer is motivated to deliver a theater, and they're just dealing with external issues beyond their control. So that's, that is the, you know, the reason we've tried to work out a solution that kept us aligned, but would still keep their financing intact.
And so this is certainly renegotiation, renegotiation is not something any of us wants to do, but I certainly don't think we should hold up the entire project over this. So I'm fine supporting this tonight. I did actually do some back-of-the-envelope calculations based on both the 2016 and the 2018 fiscal analysis that we had done. As I recall, the net fiscal, and these are net numbers, was between $1.7 and $2 million. So even with the delay of the theater now, I think the project is still largely very, very positive for the city. And so I want to make sure we keep that in mind. Thank you. That's it for now.
Mr. Snyder?
Or, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thanks for the questions and answers that the City Council has raised, and the answers. I think key is that we are losing leverage. This proposal has a lot less leverage. Holding up the certificates of occupancy is a very effective leverage device. We've learned the hard way that that is very effective. The developer has come to us again, shifting the risk to the city. We've seen this before with other developers recently, shifting the risk to the city and offering practically nothing for the city to take on that risk, an escrow fund that the city doesn't control that is indefinite, no substitution for the lost revenue. And as we heard, it's not just the lost revenue from the theater, but the likely lost revenue from the retail, which is reliant on the theater. So frankly, I don't understand why we're giving up leverage and getting nothing of value in return. That would be point number one. Point number two, since affordable housing at 10% has been a major issue, why don't we include that as a condition for granting the less leverage along with other conditions? I proposed that, and I've been met with silence. So that's an issue. Finally, I think this really significantly changes the overall financial benefit of this, and it certainly removes the fundamental reason for doing this project in the first place. And I do align my comments with those of the citizens who have well laid out their concerns and their objections to accepting what is basically a unilateral giving up of leverage. Yet again, circumstances change. The developers demand renegotiation. The city caves in and gets very little in return. So I have no problem opposing this. I think it's bad negotiating. I think it's a bad result for the city. And so I'll be opposing this proposal. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Conley, and then Mr. Duncan?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. So once again, we're, what we thought we were getting when we signed, when we approved a special exception is not what we're going to get, or may not be what we're going to get. Mr. Shields, here's my question for you. As, and I, just to recap, for people who may not have been watching all along, one of the concerns when this first came up was, if we don't do this, then what's the result at Founder's Row? I mean, are we stuck between a rock and a hard place, and we have to go forward with something? What would happen if we did not approve this?
Well, I might invite Mr. Muffler to respond to that question. If that's okay. I mean, I can respond from my perspective, but you might be better here just directly from the developer?
Yeah, no, and this, to be blunt, Vice Mayor Conley, the ultimate outcome is that there could be a default on the construction loan, which would remove the developer from the project and render the project incomplete. It's a massive impediment. Again, just given the macroeconomic circumstances surrounding this, not a self violation of kind of the terms, but a historic, industry-wide change that necessitated this request. So that is the context that we have, when we initially began these conversations with city staff, was there is potential of a default and the removal from the project. So that's very real circumstances.
So that's the very, very worst case. Is there a medium worst case?
No, 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 I mean, that's the reality, because, again, I'm trying to keep my comments brief, because I know I've said a lot, and I do appreciate staff and all the boards and commissions' input on this. You know, we are actively working to backfill this space. The success of this project is predicated on having a movie theater. Our success, financial and otherwise, is predicated on having a movie theater. So we are aligned, bottom line and above line, in that capacity with the city. You know, we don't believe we're asking for a handout, and I think that staff and council and commissions have been very good at treating it as such thus far and availing us of any additional punitive measures, but rather keeping our eyes on the prize of the big goal. What is the best thing we can do to get a movie theater into this project and filling the original terms of disagreement? And we are actively trying to do that by restricting our ability to occupy, though. Not only does it hinder it, it almost makes it impossible. For us or someone else, a movie theater doesn't want to come in in a half-empty project. So anyways, that's, I think, my feedback on that.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Shields, this just follows along with Ms. Hiscott's question. You said that there's not an end date, that this is there in perpetuity, as it were. When we originally signed an agreement and approved an SE, there is like a three-year timeline of, from the time it is authorized until the time it has to be built or begun. There's nothing in here like that at all? No timing?
Yeah, the 36-month clock for special exceptions is for them to get underway. It's for them to begin the project.
Right.
And so that's been satisfied. So, you know, we could put a deadline in it, but we chose not to, because that opens the door to all sorts of other options, and our goal has been to say there aren't other options.
If we don't put a deadline in it, can we have a check-in period?
Part of the, part of their commitment in this is for regular check-ins, monthly reports on their progress of recruiting a theater tenant to the site. So that will be ongoing. And, you know, really, I think what all of this is about is keeping the eyes on that goal. And we've kept it pretty simple that way.
Okay, so this is, another way to think about it is this is going to bridge the gap to get us all together to get to that final goal, which is what we approved back, and I don't even know how many years ago.
2018.
2018, there we go. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the staff's disciplined focus on that message of this project needs, wants, must-have, a movie theater as its anchor. That is an interest which both the city and the developer have in alignment, in my opinion. And I hope that we can keep our eye on that ball. You know, appreciate the letters from the folks who, excuse me, have had concerns about the project from the very beginning. You know, I understand the temptation to set a deadline. I'm a former journalist, understand the value of deadlines. But, you know, the problem with deadlines in this instance is if you know the week or the month of the year that we're going to get back, you know, to normal, then, you know, I'd like you to buy me some stock. I mean, we just don't know, and as Mr. Shields said, if we set a deadline, it sort of, you know, creates the possibility that we just that we just get waited out until the deadline passes and then, you know, the developer moves on. I think we want a movie theater in this project. And we believe that the developer is working hard and will report back monthly on their efforts to secure a movie theater. And this measure that we're considering tonight enables that process to unfold. You know, it's a professionally adversarial situation that we're in here. We're all adults, you know, we, we don't want to be taken advantage of. And we understand that the developer has bankers to whom it must answer. But, you know, the secret that we have had going here for a good number of years in Falls Church is that we have a professionally adversarial process with developers. But at the end of the day, you know, we try really hard to find interests in alignment. And the success of that model has brought us about $4.5 million in net physical impact from the various projects that we've done here going back to 2003. And I would like us to keep working in that manner and vein because I think this potential, this project has great potential to be a terrific amenity for our residents, for nearby folks who will come in and patronize other businesses. And for that reason, I'll close my remarks by moving good up TR 21-02.
Does anyone wish to second Mr. Duncan's motion?
I'll second it.
Vice Mayor Connolly on the second. Mr. Snyder and then Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Sure. So while this has been, while this has been characterized as a way to move forward, the movie theater fact is exactly the reverse. What we're doing here is giving away the leverage that we negotiated and granting the developer the ability to make a profit on those residential units with an indefinite time period for some escrow that the city doesn't even control. So in my view, this is exactly the opposite. This is allowing the developer to make the profit on the residential, fail to perform on its agreement, which is what this is. And then we are in fact, in my view, being taken advantage of. So I have no problem voting against this to send a clear signal that we're going to protect our interest just as we assume developers protect theirs. Thank you.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks. I've said this a few times before, but I think it's important because I know a lot of folks have written in asking questions about fiscals and we've used the term leverage quite a bit. There is no leverage for this theater right now. I mean, the truth of the matter is it was, it was difficult to convince the market that a theater should be at this site anyway. And it is, it is almost impossible right now to convince anyone in the market that a theater should be there. And it is going to be even more difficult, if that's even possible, to convince a theater to move to this project if it is only half occupied. I mean, that is, that is just, those are the facts. So I, for one, you know, listen, I think it's great that, that there was a theater that was put into this project to begin with. I think that it's a unique amenity for the city. I think it's great. I still question whether, you know, the, the market really wants one to be there right now. And that is the ultimate arbiter of whether this project is going to, to work with the theater or not. But it is unfortunate that, it is unfortunate that we're dealing with this pandemic and this is just an unfortunate casualty of that. But again, it was difficult to find a theater in the first place. And now that the pandemic has hit, it's going to be even more problematic. And it's going to be virtually impossible to lure a theater to that site if that is what council wants, if, if it is only half occupied. Because they, they, they would need that guaranteed foot traffic and purchasing power from the individuals living in that building to make sense of the economics, even with the theater tax that's been passed. And so I, I support this begrudgingly because obviously we'd like everything to line up perfectly, but that is just not going to happen right now. And I don't want to see this project fail. And I think, again, it's going to be a tough slog to get a theater. Let's not make it an impossible mountain to move to get that theater if that's what council and the community want. If that's what we want, then, then we need to help this project survive in order to make that happen. So I, I will support this.
All right, additional comments, anyone? So just speaking for myself, I am hesitant to go forward with this. I do think it's great leverage. In other words, it's almost crippling leverage. Half of the COs for a project, it's, you know, that's, that's like the death, you know? It's like the nuclear option. Unfortunately, all the leverage in the world, I don't think can deliver a movie theater right now. It's just the way the market is, unfortunately, and that's the nature of the beast. And so I'm much more sympathetic than I would be in other times. I don't feel like this is the doing of the developer or the developer trying to get cute or anything else other than just reacting to unprecedented times. And so I'm much more sympathetic than I might have been otherwise. That being said, I do want a movie theater and I don't want to have, you know, the developer come in and a year and a half and want to put a bouncy gym in or a, you know, moon bounce place or something like that. I'm just not going to be sympathetic to that. I think we as a city are being reasonable and working with the developer through this amendment. And as has been said by many, giving up, I think, great leverage, crippling leverage, but that's not, I don't think a reasonable action for us to take right now. And so I think we ought to be working together. But that, that shouldn't diminish the expectation that ultimately we do get a theater and that the developer understands that that's where they need to head and they may need to provide additional subsidies in the future for a theater. But that's my expectation that ultimately we will get a theater through the developer's hard work and good work. So I will support this, this motion. Would you have a motion on the table that's been seconded? Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next item, please.
We have TO 20-26, Ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 48, zoning, Article 2, Administration, Division 3, Amendments, Section 48-90, Special Exception, to edit the primary and secondary criteria to provide flexibility by allowing consideration of projects that provide newer, but not necessarily additional, commercial development and to specifically reference considerations of small area plan guidance, walkability, and streetscape.
All right, thank you. Who's going to be doing this report? Is it Ms. Bell or is it someone else, Mr. Shields?
It, it, we'll have Ms. Bell take the lead in our staff report tonight. And this item is coming back to you now after referral out to boards and commissions for comments. So we'll summarize what those comments are. We've not made changes to the actual text, but we will have discussion of the comment, receive any, any additional comment from city council. It is now before the council for second reading and final consideration. But we do recognize that we were hoping to have a work session a week ago on this item, which we were not able to do. So we certainly are looking forward to the council's discussion on this item. Let me turn it over to Ms. Bell for the staff report. I'll also just note that Jim Snyder is on this call and I believe Paul Stoddard is on the call as well, or he was on the call. I'm just looking through the list. But Ms. Bell, if you could give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you recall, the, the purpose of this amendment is really to modernize the SE criteria to continue to facilitate redevelopment of underutilized sites within the planning opportunity areas of the city. Coming out of first reading, there were several changes to the existing text of the SE criteria. First and foremost, that all three primary criteria must be met. And then we recommended that instead of having the language of net new commercial space, it would propose to be replaced with a requirement for significant new or renovated commercial space, the focus being on quality and not just quantity. As noted in the description of this amendment, a small area plan guidance was incorporated. And then substantial net new commercial revenue to the city was also a primary criteria modification. When the item was referred out to the EDA, the EDC and the Planning Commission, we had a lot of discussion and that is actually summarized on page six of the staff report. Essentially, both the EDA, the ESC and the Planning Commission in their work sessions discussed the issue of commercial versus residential revenue. And a lot of the conversation was around what types of projects might or might not be unable to make the bar if the word residential was deleted from the primary criteria with respect to revenue. The conclusion at each was that commercial was important, residential was also important. And in the Planning Commission work session, that discussion also was, also included a desire to get feedback from additional commissions and boards. Subsequent to the Planning Commission work session, comments were received from the ESC and the USC, the Urban Forestry Commission, and the Subcommittee of the ESC. And several recommendations came forward with respect to inclusion of environmental and green infrastructure and things of that nature. And in addition to that, a LEED gold certification was a recommendation of the ESC. When the Planning Commission took its final recommendation, which you see there beginning on line 171, the commission recommended that there be several changes to the ordinance. Specifically, that the language of environmentally sustainable and inclusive be added to the purpose and intense section of the SE ordinance, that Primary Criteria 1C should be maintained as currently adopted, meaning that both residential and commercial revenue should be incorporated. There would be text changes recommended also to the secondary criteria for infrastructure, parks and open space, and then LEED rating. And just if it's easier to do a line-by-line review or to see how they compare, attachment two of the report or the package, rather, has each of these items in a side-by-side comparison. Essentially, the focus of the Planning Commission's ultimate recommendation at their hearing last week was that they wanted to incorporate a considerably more focus on environmental policy and environmental sustainability in the ordinance for the go-forward. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, before we get to that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is not.
All right, let's see who's got questions. Ms. Hardy?
More comments. So I will start with the first one. Thank you, Ms. Bell, for your work on this. I know we've gone through a few turns of this as well, so appreciate you bringing this to our boards. So I'll start with the easier one, which when I read through the recommendations from the Planning Commission and the ESC, I was fine with all the ones around environment. I thought that it was appropriate for us to set a higher bar. And if staff kind of concurs, then I like the additions in the secondary criteria as recommended in the staff report. So that is my first one. The next one is if we scroll to the primary criteria, I wanted to propose hopefully a pretty simple and elegant edit that I think will address some of the concerns we've been hearing. I want to say it's line 276 to 283. So we, as we've been going around and around on talking about the three primary criteria, in 1C, my concern right now is that when we have residential struck, and actually it looks like this version of it has residential added back in. So I'm actually fine with it because I do think that at the end of the day, revenue is revenue. And so I want to make sure we are not excluding residential revenue as a good source because at the end of the day, net positive revenue is still a boon for the city. And so I want to make sure we are not vilifying residential revenue. So I like how we've added that back in. So no changes, so I'm actually supportive of 1C as it stands. Thank you for making that edit since our last turn of this.
Mr. Snyder?
So let me try to understand the current 1C before I make any comments. So when I moved those ordinance on first reading, for me, the important thing was 1C. While we're giving up the net new area of commercial, we would be assured of significant new, substantial positive net new commercial. Now, in interpreting this provision, what does, what does 1C mean? Does it mean, for example, that if we had $1 of commercial revenue, but $100 in residential revenue, that that would be sufficient? Or I'm having a little difficulty understanding this because if I recall, the SE was really created to, to bring about commercial development. So what I see is further gutting of that, of that objective. But I want to make sure what we're really saying with the new 1C with the adding back in of residential, which by the way, I think is a substantive change which should send us back to first reading. But we can deal with that later. But what, what, what does that mean? Give me examples of, of what it means. Does it mean 1/10 of the increased revenue is commercial versus 90% residential? Are we just advocating for more residential units with all their service costs in the city? I mean, what does 1C mean?
Well, I think most of the discussion we had at the various meetings where this came up was really around the fact that by removing the term residential and residential revenue from the calculus, that there were a number of desirable projects that might not make it through the hurdle. And so the feeling was that, or at least what we were hearing, was that the three primary criteria taken together, because there is the language added of all of these being required, would get a better result for the city. Because there are times when the small sites or shape of a site might make it difficult to accomplish significant residential or, excuse me, commercial square footage and therefore potentially revenue. And that there might be significant residential, which would be beneficial. So rather than excluding those types of mixed-use projects, the consensus seemed to be that it was important to essentially retain the language as currently in the ordinance.
Let me, let me follow up. I, I guess I'm still trying to understand what 1C means. And then does it mean that I could have 100% commercial development with no public, virtually no public service cost, but I couldn't approve that development because it didn't also have residential? So I'm trying to understand what we're really saying with 1C.
Well, again, 1C is the current language in the ordinance. So there's no real change proposed there. With the criteria as, as written, all three criteria, you have the guidance of the small area plans, I think, getting you a better alignment of what the community and the council and the commissions have said is desirable in a given location, which is typically going to be a mixed-use project. So the test of 1C would be a comparison of existing versus proposed revenue that would be generated from the commercial and residential revenue, run through the fiscal model and so forth.
So what you're saying is it could be 100% residential, even though it's in a commercial area, and that would meet 1C? I'm, I'm not sure even it's that negative, to tell you the truth. But if that's your view, it makes it very difficult for me to vote for this.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that 100% residential is possible as a result of this, no. I think you have to tie into all three of these criteria. So the expectation is that any project coming through is going to be at least compatible with the small area plan guidance that's provided for that area, that there's going to be significant new or renovated commercial space. So there will be commercial space. And that in 1C, that there will be substantial net positive net new commercial and residential revenue. We're simply trying to tie residential into the total revenue that the project is forecast to achieve, because again, this is about mixed use development.
Well, it seems to me it ought to be about the most favorable development, whether it's mixed use or not. But I actually read 1C more positively, that it's got to have substantial positive commercial as well as substantial positive residential. But you're reading it as though it were an or. So I'm just trying to figure out.
I apologize if I've given that impression. I don't, I think you definitely have to provide both substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenue, if in fact it is a mixed use project.
Okay, well.
Susan and Mr. Snyder, this is Jim Snyder. I think the key thing here is it's the same language we've had. There's no change to it. That's the net effective result of this. It's existing language unchanged. It just has, you know, added back in the residential. I don't think we would have 100% all residential project, all of the other items, you know, are part of this as well. And by removing residential, we thought that was a step backwards. So leaving it as it's always been written, as is presently written, is the pot, is the best way to go.
But we're also amending one of the other provisions that tends to downplay commercials. So my thinking was in originally voting for this and moving it forward, was that while in my view, we were losing a little bit of the focus on commercial with 1B, that we were getting it back 1C. Now I'm hearing that you could have projects that are really overwhelmingly residential. And so I'm surprised by that because that isn't even a necessary reading of 1C. But if that's the reading of the people that are going to implement it, then I have some difficulty with that.
Mr., Ms. Hiscott, and then Mr. Lichtenhouse, and then Mr. Duncan. Ms. Hiscott?
Sorry. Just confirming that the deletion on 1C was just, the addition was just replacing deletion. So it is exactly the same as it has been on 1C?
Yes, it essentially retains the language as currently in the ordinance.
Okay, so there's no change to 1C, essentially. Secondly, I just wanted to thank the boards and commissions, the ESC and the Urban Forestry Commission for making some recommendations that I think are great to have in here with regard to environmental sustainability. I think they complement our comprehensive plan and small area plans, and I definitely support having the language that's been added with regard to that, with regard to lead gold and environmentally sustainable and resilient communities. So thank you for the good work of our boards and commissions for adding that and making that, in my opinion, a stronger move forward for the SE.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks, Susan, and maybe Jim as well. I'm still trying to wrap my head around how this helps solve for the problem that frankly, I was interested in solving for, which is infill development and some, and I'm using air quotes here, "commercial sites" as they're designated, for redevelopment. I mean, we've got some sites that are in T1 districts that are just single family homes that have been renovated to a professional services office or a dentist's office. And the way that I read this still is that if somebody wanted to redevelop that site, they were going to have to generate significantly more commercial revenue. Let me say it a different way. It's effectively going to prohibit development on those sites, those infill sites, the way that this still reads. Am I not interpreting this correctly?
I don't think it would prohibit it. I mean, those sites are still going to be somewhat problematic in that they are located next to single family homes, and there will be reluctance to make them too tall or too dense. But it wouldn't prohibit it. We do think that those kinds of sites, perhaps we need another separate look at those sites, the T1, the T zones in particular, to work on that smaller scale infill. Certainly, this wouldn't prohibit that from happening, but I think it does solve a lot of other problems with the ordinance by modernizing it, bringing it much more up to date with what we're doing in planning and the environment. But I think our feeling is to really get those sites, we need a separate, smaller, more focused study.
Yeah, and I mean, I get it. It's this particular tool. I mean, I don't know how surgical we can get with it, but I just look at a number of sites around the city that the economics of them, if you're requiring, if you're requiring commercial revenue to be a part of that site, in some cases, either the location, meaning it's closer to single family homes, or just the economics of the size of the site, you would never put commercial there. I mean, you would never even include commercial. And you could have some really interesting innovative infill projects that, yes, might be entirely residential, but on a very, very small scale. And the way that I read this, it doesn't allow for that.
I'd just say that thinking back on several that have come through the process and not been successful, many of them have had commercial, but by the time you added it all up on a site that was small and really close to the single family, that there was resistance and concern about scale of the project, how tall it got to be, how dense it got to be. And they are, those projects do have to make economics work. So scale of the project often reflected the economics needed to make the numbers work. But the projects got too big for community comfort and for political support. And many of them then were withdrawn or, you know, they got dragged out to a point where they were no longer viable and they disappeared.
So Jim, what is your recommendation to solve for those types of things?
Well, we think we need to take a more focused look at the T zones in particular. For example, most of those have to get upzoned to a B zone for something to be done. And these are almost all adjacent to the single family. We may need to look at a lesser amount of development without rezoning, that we can get a mixed use project in there without the expectation of it. A lot of commercial may not in fact work unless primarily residential street. In some cases, you may, you know, if you have a lot of commercial, the amount of activity it would generate can be anathema to the folks living across the street and single family neighborhoods. So we think that needs a more focused study. We certainly can do development with this tool in those areas, but the scale of it and the expectation of the property owners for more density may produce a project that's bigger than people are comfortable saying yes to. That's what I've noticed in the ones that have gone, have not gone forward, is they get too big and scale and activity is too great for neighborhood comfort and for political support.
Okay. All right, now, I don't want to pick on 1C anymore than it's already been picked on, but to me, the solution was to just say net new revenue to the city. Because I read that the same way I think Councilman Snyder did, which is, you know, it seems like you could have an all or nothing either way, but if the interpretation is no different than what it is, and it's looking at it in aggregate, the way that it's written, I'm okay with it, but I feel that, you know, we're looking for net new revenue, and the additional words there are just complicated. Even if that existed before. So, all right, thanks, thanks, guys.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to make this journey brief. Appreciate Mr. Lichtenhouse's line of inquiry there. I mean, okay, here is what I want. I want us to have a vehicle which will incentivize construction of condominium buildings of a very modest size, say 60 units, and probably of more small unit size than we have typically seen here, such that they could be priced in the 450 to 750 range. That's why I got into the discussion of this special exception modification conversation. We've succeeded in a lot of things in the last 20 years here in Falls Church, but we've not, we've not been able to provide that housing offer in our market. And as Mr. Snyder said many times, you know, giving young people a chance to grab, you know, a hand on the ladder of homeownership is very important. And I would like us to have some, you know, legislative vehicle that tells a developer, you know, we get that. And we, in this particular instance, maybe on a side street, we want to see buildings that are not six stories tall. We want to see offering prices that are not a million and a half dollars. We want something more modest. And therefore, that is what, you know, led me to want to support the effort that's going on here. I personally would broaden it even beyond that. Mr. Snyder will love this, but on some of our commercial streets, there are properties which frankly just don't need to have commercial because they're just a block away from a massive commercial project, whether it's Founder's Row, or, you know, the Atlantic Project, or Spectrum, or any of the number of other developments that we've already put in place. You know, there's some very successful models in DC on Connecticut Avenue, Wisconsin Avenue of, you know, apartment buildings that are all residential, you know, provide, create a submarket for the nearby commercial activity. I mean, if we go forward with all the things that we have on our plate, and I hope we do, we're going to have a tremendous amount of ground floor retail in the city of Falls Church, much more than we have now. And at some point, I think we need to have the ability to approve an all residential project. But not insisting that perfect be the enemy of good. I suppose, you know, the virtue of this is that this gets us out of that box that says that we've got to replace every square foot of existing commercial with the same or more footage commercial, as Mr. Lichtenhouse says, with just some current uses that should, the market won't tolerate, you know, multiply. They want to be residential. And so for that reason, I guess B is an improvement. I would drop C out altogether, where I certainly would say resulting development produces substantial positive net new revenue to the city and be done with it, which would give councils, guided by the comprehensive plan and by the small area plans, would give councils flexibility to apply as they saw appropriate, depending on the individual situation. So I guess I'm curious if anybody else feels anything like the way that I do about, you know, streamlining C, as I stated, or if, you know, we're just going to go ahead and vote for this as it's presented, and then have some sort of separate track where we keep talking about how to create opportunities for these smaller condominium projects to take root and blame in the city.
I haven't spoken yet, but I would say, A, I think this is a reasonable compromise what's on the table now. I do think, first off, at the end of the day, our tax base is predominantly residential, much more so than our neighbors in Arlington and many other communities. And I don't think we're going to get to a balanced tax base or more balanced tax base, a 50-50 tax base, by making it easier to not have even the smallest amount of commercial development. And remember as well, the development of some of these projects, even the junky house that gets torn down, it's not even a full floor. It doesn't have an FAR of one. It may occupy, you know, a third or a quarter because it's got a bunch of surface parking. So generally speaking, you're talking about a very limited amount of commercial that needs to be replaced. Secondly, the projects that have not gone forward recently, frankly, have not gone forward not because they couldn't offer a little bit of ground floor space, they wanted to be bigger than they should have been. The one project near the Kensington wanted to be a floor taller, even though as behind the Broadway. You know, they wanted to not taper down to a single family neighborhood, they wanted to taper up. And they were unreasonable and willing to compromise and have conversations about that. I mean, to me, this is one of the leverage we have to get things, whether it's a tiny city museum, or even neighborhood offices, even though they may not be in high demand, they'll probably have very low rents, which actually allow people in the city to stay here, just like, you know, the guy who's got his sauces in the, you know, the sauce store in the Tanner Hill project, and some of the other local retailers that find space in retail that the developers didn't want to prepare or produce. The Tanner Hill, that retail on that side, they didn't want to do that. And nonetheless, we've got, I believe, three local businesses, essentially Falls Church centric businesses there. And so I do think there's a value in seeking retail. And frankly, I think it helps us get the Whole Foods of the world, because if they're not obligated to give us any retail or commercial, then maybe we won't get any. And maybe we'll get an apartment pony, but without a Whole Foods in the bottom, or a movie theater, or a lot of the other things we'd like. So I do feel that it is necessary and appropriate to have some standards. This is a lessening of what we have now. We've gotten some really good things, to my mind, over these past years. I think more so than we ever have had in the history of this city that I'm aware of as far as ground floor uses that are very successful and financially accretive to the city. So I do think this, what is proposed, is a lessening of that, but I would not support a greater lessening. And lastly, I would add, does the word "and" need to go at the end to "be"? We talked that it was an "and," but I didn't see an "and" there, and I'm not sure I saw it anyplace before then, but maybe I'm missing something. Am I missing something? It used to say that primary criteria are essential, and now it says "is," but nonetheless, there's no "and" or other, I guess it's, I don't know whether, what it is, conjunction in there, but I think it needs an "and." But anyway, that's my two cents.
Line 273 does say that they both are, well, that they're essential to the character and well-being, but the new language says compliance with all of the primary criteria.
What line is that on? I must have missed that. What line is that on?
273.
Oh, it's the new language, okay.
It's the new language coming out of first reading.
I got you, I'm sorry. That's my fault then, my apologies. Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks. So I just respectfully disagree with the interpretation of 1C. I think in essence, what 1C says is that it's got to have both commercial and residential, and both have to be substantial or significant. That's my reading of it. And the more I think about it, the more that I think this is worth moving forward, particularly because of the addition of the sustainability provisions. So, Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, I'll move approval of this ordinance on second reading.
All right, do we have a second? Do we have a second on the ordinance? All right, it appears it fails for the absence of a second. Do we have another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move passes of the ordinance, omitting the language in line 282 and 283.
All right, do we have a second?
Could you please show lines 282 and 283? Thank you.
So you want to delete the words that say the resulting development produces substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenue to the city?
Right.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, that fails for absence.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that, Phil?
Yes.
Just removing the words net new commercial and residential, just making it substantial positive revenue to the city?
Yes, I'd accept that as an improved interpretation of my. Yes, I'd accept that as an improved interpretation of my proposal. So my...
But don't you want it to say net revenue because that covers your expenses?
Yeah, net revenue to the city.
It said just revenue. I would support it if it said net revenue.
Yeah, the resulting development produces substantial positive net revenue to the city.
Ms. Hardy?
Ross actually beat me to the friendly amendment. I was going to propose simplifying it and just leave it as net revenue. So I support that amendment.
All right.
Wait, are you deleting the word "new" altogether? Or just net new revenue to the city?
Net new revenue.
That's what I would say is net new revenue.
Okay, so my motion is to adopt 2020-26 with that as that language.
All right, do we have a second for that motion?
Could you just read the language again to make sure I understand what, that we're all going in the same direction here? Because you said "that language," I want to make sure we're... The resulting development produces substantial positive net new revenue to the city.
Yes, thank you. I just landed on the scroll. Yes.
All right, Ms. Hardy, did you still have a comment? Or is that, you're done?
Nope, I was just going to support that amendment.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I'm a City Attorney. It seems to me this is a significant change that would require going back to first reading.
Well, I think that's a very close question. But I think it does have a substantive change because we've had no discussion about having, striking the words "commercial." We did advertise striking the words "unresidential," but to also strike "commercial" is, it's a substantive change, I suppose. Although it's a very small, it's a small one. But it does change the meaning in a way that hasn't been advertised.
So what do you believe?
So I would recommend that if, that unless you leave, you could leave it with removing the words "and residential," you could strike those words because that was advertised. But I don't think we can strike the "commercial" part because that has not been advertised as a change to the ordinance.
Can I just ask a question, Carol?
Sure.
And maybe this is just for my own edification for anything that we're considering now. So does that, that leads me to believe that anytime we're voting on anything, if someone makes an amendment that hasn't been advertised, it would have to go back to first reading?
Well, the question is whether the amendment is substantive. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. Also, for instance, and sometimes the amendment such as putting back "and residential" is within the scope of the advertising. But the change that's being suggested right now to strike the commercial revenue, the words "commercial," was never raised as a topic of discussion. And that's why I think it does, it is a substantive change to the ordinance and to what was advertised. It goes outside of what was advertised, essentially.
So why don't you continue and tell us the implications for tonight's meeting then, Carol?
So I would suggest either that you direct staff to go back and re-advertise this or, you know, there's an option to leave the language "as is," which doesn't change either "commercial" or "residential." But if you wish to strike the words "and residential," that can certainly be done because that was advertised. But I think the problem will be if you try to change the language of C to strike new commercial revenue to the city, that was never advertised as a possible change to the ordinance.
So the choices for tonight are either potential, adopt what is before us essentially or re-advertise a more broad advertisement and then go to a later first reading and second reading?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Duncan? Yes?
We do have time to advertise for the next regular meeting if you wish to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Duncan, you're the maker of this motion. It's, I guess, still on the table technically. Do you have any thoughts, what you'd like to do?
Oh, well, you know, I certainly want everybody to have a chance to weigh in on this. I mean, it seems like a pretty, a fair majority would support it tonight. Certainly would benefit from more discussion if it broadened the willingness to accept it. But we obviously need to do what's legal, so.
What if, sorry, Phil?
No, I don't, I don't, I mean, what am I supposed to do?
I mean, if...
Carol?
I feel like we're mincing, could we just say "commercial" or "residential" revenue to the city? Or "and/or"?
Yeah, my other question was, is there some wordsmithing way? Apparently some things that were written in and struck out are okay to vote on. Can we just do some tinkering that is still within the bounds?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to hear from others, but that gets us to the same place. If you say "or," or it could be "and backslash or," and I can't imagine that that change is, would require us to go back to first reading.
Well, that's, that certainly would be acceptable to me, but I'd like to hear from the City Attorney as to whether using the wordage "positive net commercial and/or residential" revenue to the city.
My, it seems like it would help, but I'm afraid it may suffer from the same defect, essentially. I, and I, you know, I realize we're just cutting, you're sort of splitting small hairs here. But in the same way, if we use the word "or," we still have made an option for no commercial revenue that hasn't been advertised. So it would be my recommendation that if you want to change that to "or," you, that be re-advertized. But if you want to just adopt, I think that the original language, you know, may have been interpreted in some ways to reflect that. In other words, whatever the overall revenue is, the commercial and the residential revenue. So if that's the case, then I would just stick in with the original language if you don't want to go back and re-advertise it.
In other words, if I don't, if I read "and" differently from the way others may read it, basically, I just read it as an aggregate amount of revenue, whether it comes from commercial or residential. It's no matter. Then I can support this. Is that what you're telling me?
I would think so, yes. And I don't, I think one question is how has this been interpreted? I don't know if, you know, I don't, I would want to check with, you know, maybe Jim Snyder or Gary Fuller has some understanding of how this language has been used. Has it been used to require net new of commercial and net new of residential? Or has it been treated in the aggregate?
Well, I think, Carol, what we were trying to do by leaving it alone was first to do no harm. And I think if you look at B, where we're getting rid of the net amount of commercial, you're still required to have some kind of a mix, allowing for a mix of commercial and residential uses. I mean, to understand the notion of streamlining the language, so you're looking at the collective revenue, and I think C can be interpreted that way. But this is, the way this is being written is to give the council flexibility to judge a project in its totality, all of the things it has, including the mix of commercial and residential. But trying to give them more flexibility so they're not stuck with, particularly the net new was a real problem. So our recommendation of this, after looking at it, was let's leave that language "as is" because we don't want to make it, we don't want to go backwards. I do think in terms of these smaller projects, one of the things we've talked about is perhaps the T-zones could be rewritten to allow a smaller-scale project of mixed use on those sites that are designated for mixed use. And I think the mayor's discussion about many of them got too big to be approved is true. So that's one option we thought was perhaps a look at the T-zones and modernizing them so that they could allow the kind of project that Mr. Duncan is suggesting without getting so big and going through the rezoning to be the B-zones that has seemingly made them too large to be acceptable. Because we've had projects that had commercial. They just got too big and too overwhelming for comfort for the neighbors.
Well, the reason, you know, the reason that they got too big was because we insisted on commercial. I mean, the Tradition Place proposal, you know, had a ground floor of retail and a ground floor of office in order to try to meet our SE, you know, qualifications.
Well, yes, and they were willing to do that. It's just that the project, as you said, got too big. So one of the things we thought was, if we looked at, if we looked at smaller site, smaller-scale project idea as a separate item and perhaps looked at the T-zones and those, as needing, amending to allow smaller-scale project that would not necessarily have all this, all the commercial that created scale intensity.
But that location was not a T-zone location, was it? I mean, or was it?
There was, the backside of it had zonings. Yeah, I mean, it was complex, but it had some of those, some of those issues. You're all's choice, but we, you know, as we looked at it, to change back to leave 1C "as is," we thought was better than striking, you know, commercial and having it only residential. I understand where some council would like to be.
If I could to extend, to try to go down the mayor's route a little bit here. So commercial uses that are basically professional services. Have we traditionally, I mean, I can remember there are buildings that we've approved where we disallowed, you know, professional services on the ground floor because we didn't consider that to be true retail. And, you know, that's gotten us in some trouble, frankly, because we have some ground floor spaces that are just not ever going to probably be anything except, you know, financial services, dentists, whatever. What is our, what's our posture on how we, you know, the proposal for Park &amp; Lee had, you know, live work as an option. Well, you know, folks didn't believe that there would be a lot of work going on there. But nonetheless, that's what they, that's what they came with. We have fairly strictly interpreted what "commercial" is, further constraining our ability to develop, you know, with appropriate smaller-scale buildings, some of these parcels. Or am I wrong?
Well, at least to my mind, I mean, I think it's, depending on the location, certainly some of these side streets or lesser streets are appropriate for, you know, office use or service, commercial uses. And I think they would meet the definition of quote "commercial." They certainly wouldn't be residential. All right, so we have a few other comments. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Duncan, I think, you know, I think this, the changes we're making would allow interpretation of, if we, if it was felt to be appropriate, of something less than retail. I think there is a demand for a certain amount of professional office space. Some of these side streets are very, very good for service uses that are useful to everyone, but are not necessarily very active. They don't have the traffic of the location to be successful as a very active retail space. And one of the big problems there was the word "net new," where you had to replace a significant amount of more commercial than existed on the site. The live-work concept can work. There are doctors and dentist's offices that also could work. Small professional offices, I think, are appropriate and are very compatible with adjacent neighborhoods. And the marketplace, to some extent, is to decide what's successful. I think in some cases, if you're looking for, you know, very exciting retail, these side streets are not places where that will be successful. So a different kind of commercial is more appropriate. This, I think, would give you the ability to make that judgment.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. I have two questions. The first is, is this understandable to developers? I mean, is someone going to read this and know exactly what they mean? Or will they have to come in to talk to someone in Jim Snyder's office, Mr. Fuller or someone else, to understand what we're trying to say? And is our goal to make it understandable without a conversation? Or does it always require a conversation anyway?
I think most projects do require conversation with the staff well prior to submission. So I don't think the issue is really whether it's confusing or not. I think the developers are pretty keen on understanding these things well in advance of submission.
Okay.
I mean, frankly, people will do this before they even put a contract on the property. You know, if they have a particular use they intend to do, it's likely they'll do it before they put it under contract or during due diligence, but certainly before they start spending a whole lot of money. It's just extremely common to come in and talk with staff before you start spending some more money.
So will they be able, in looking at what we have here, to come in to staff and get a reasonable explanation? Yes, council is likely to approve this. Council is not likely to approve this based upon this ordinance.
I would say, this is Jim Snyder, I would say yes. I think people have been following the ebbs and flows of these changes. And I think generally people are positive about, you know, the modernizing of it and the additional flexibility. You know, we're going to be looking at how well a project comports with what the smaller area plan says, which most of them have a lot of detail that helps people understand what should happen on a particular site. So there will be conversations, but I think we will, this will be a better ordinance and people will be able to be more successful in tailoring their project using this sort of code.
And then my next question is...
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. This is the City Attorney. I just wanted to mention, we also have to look at, these are kind of general standards for a legislative process that someone's going through to get a special exception approval, which is different from, do I have a zoning ordinance that has administrative standards where I have to know exactly what happens? When you're doing a legislative process, there is a lot more give and take and flexibility in the standards.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. And then my next question is, there's nothing in here that says any percentage has to be commercial or any percentage maximum or minimum, right?
That's correct.
That is something that is worked out later.
That's correct. They're worked out on a site-specific basis.
Okay, just as we do right now?
Yes.
We look at those percentages. Okay. So the major changes are just, we're taking out net new and we're adding green infrastructure and environmental sustainability.
Yes, plus all the other earlier changes that included all the planning work that you've all been doing for the last many years.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, so it's getting late. We need to, I think, wrap this discussion up and figure out where we're heading because we do have additional items and a closed session tonight. Is there, does A, does someone have a motion, another motion? I guess, Phil, your motion's on the table, although it can't be legally acted on tonight, as I understand it. And so I guess the question would be, does someone have another motion? Or you have another motion, Phil? Or do people want to take other action, such as advertising?
Thank you for asking. So what's the process if we need to re-advertise? Can we pass something tonight on first reading and then advertise it? Or does this whole thing have to go back to first reading?
I think you could grant first reading to the revision that you want and then authorize staff to advertise it. I believe that Ms. Heat has looked at this... I believe that, um, Ms. Heat has looked at this, the requirements for advertising, and because it's a land use matter, it wouldn't be able to go to March 8th, but would have to go to March 22nd.
Yeah, that's correct.
Just to confirm, just the, the city attorney, so we don't have to advertise the action that's being taken tonight? In other words, I, I know the action between the first and second reading, you know, that's a problem, but even what we're doing tonight, that hasn't been, I guess, technically advertised maybe in this, in the way that you want for the second reading? It, it doesn't, uh, make the first reading also fatal without advertisement?
No, because a first reading doesn't ha, never has to be advertised. It does get into council's agenda, but this item in general is on the agenda. But when, when, there's no advertisement required for a, uh, council action on first, to give first reading to something.
Carol, could this, could this be adopted tonight with the change advertised, the small change advertised for consideration at a future meeting? So you, you, you basically narrow it down to, we may want to change this language in one C from what it presently is. Could you do that?
You could do that. You could adopt this as proposed with one C unchanged. And then you could also direct staff to advertise for a, um, for a second hearing, the change that's been proposed to one C for us, and do that as a separate, very small amendment in two weeks.
But wouldn't that second amendment require then two readings again? So then we have three votes.
You would be giving, essentially, it would be getting a first reading tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is the city clerk. Is there any reason this has to be passed tonight? It creates a lot more administrative work to do it twice if, if you have a goal in mind that you could do all at once?
So we're going to, that's what we're deciding now. So I appreciate the input, and we certainly don't want to give you any more work, but that's what we're trying to figure out right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, Dave Snyder. So I've heard this discussion. Uh, uh, I mean, I, I would renew my motion to approve this. I recognize that Phil Duncan and I may have different interpretations of one C, but I'm willing to live with this rather than go through this whole process, which would be essential with the amendments that have been talked about. So I'd renew my motion.
All right, so we have a motion, and that is to approve the ordinance as shown in the staff report without change.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Um, any further comment?
Could I just ask, could I just ask a question about the, the language? I'm trying to find it here about, you know, we're going to have some process to look at the T zones or whatever. Where, where is that language? I know the planning commission asked for it. That, that is in, that is somewhere in what we're approving, isn't it?
It's not in this code language, but it could be direction you give the staff.
Okay, so it was in the staff report? I'm, I'm just, I would, I would like, I would like us to get some benefit from having dragged this all out by, I see Paul Stoddard's hand is up. I don't know if that's...
Page, page one of the staff report, actually, at the very bottom, beginning with line 20, has the list of the planning commission recommended studies.
That's what I'm looking for.
So, Mr. Duncan, would you like staff directed to, to consider or, you know, continue on that, that path there?
Conduct a review that would enable smaller residential-only projects where appropriate. That's, that's what you're talking about, Susan, at line 23?
Line 23 is the, the work item that responds to your issue, yes.
Well, Mr. Snyder already has a second for his motion, but I, I would, I would love for us to include that language in the motion that, that we direct staff to conduct a review that would enable smaller residential-only projects where appropriate.
All right, Mr. Snyder, are you agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So he's agreeable to, to the motion, uh, to the change. Uh, that's the second, uh, Vice Mayor Connolly, are you agreeable as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, city attorney, has, has that kind of batted that up and we're ready to take a vote as changed by Mr. Duncan's motion or Mr. Duncan's request?
Yes, I, just to clarify then, the motion is to adopt TO 2026 and to direct staff to, now they've moved off the language, so...
Conduct a review that would enable smaller residential-only projects where appropriate.
There you go.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and, uh, call the vote on this?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Can I ask a question? Does this remove the amendment that Phil proposed?
Yes, I withdrew it. Didn't you hear me?
Yeah.
I must have been on mute, sorry.
Okay, yes, thank you.
So Ms. Hardy, you're up?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, um, let's keep rolling.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, let's keep rolling. What's next?
Consent items?
All right. Does anyone have anything they want removed from the consent agenda? It doesn't, it looks like it's all appointments. Someone want to make a motion?
Mayor, move to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any business not on the agenda, standing, regional committee, liaison reports, council comments or requests?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
EDC meets on Thursday. I sent a draft agenda to staff this afternoon. I'd like to issue that tomorrow by noon so we could get public notice. So Wyatt, Jim, Becky, Paul, et cetera, et cetera, let me know if what I proposed is within the bounds of what you can deliver to us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Duncan. We'll get back with you on that in the morning.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, know that the Government Operations Committee meets tomorrow at noon, and the agenda, the primary agenda item is to go over the charges to boards and commissions that, um, we've been talking about for a long time. So they will be done tomorrow and will be shared with council and boards and commissions.
All right, well, listen, thank you for your leadership on that issue. Other comments?
Coming.
What's that?
It's a long time coming, but it's coming.
It is indeed. Uh, any other council comments or requests? We do have a closed session, let's try to keep it brief.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing. I wanted to take note of the fact that the city manager's son, I believe, has been chosen co-captain of the Mustangs football team. Now, that is the most important thing that's happened in town this week.
Congratulations. Is that Carlos?
Uh, that is correct. Thank you for noting that.
All right.
And, uh, first, first game of the season was tonight.
Fantastic, and he's off to, can we say, college next year, VMI?
Uh, that is, that's his plan, yes, sir.
Congratulations to him, that's awesome. All right, anything else, uh, before we go into closed session? All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the motion for closed session, and then hopefully we'll have a brief closed session. The time is 11:15. We're going to take a short recess before we go into closed session as well to let the cameras come down. Upon a motion made by council member...
Hiscott. Connolly.
Let's go with Hiscott. Seconded by council member... Who wants to second this one?
Snyder.
All right, and passed by voted city council. Council on one in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Advice on an upcoming special exception applications. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Uh, Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Carter, yep. All right, let's take a five-minute recess. It's 11:16, 11:21. Let's go back in, closed session. All right?
Mayor, you are ready to continue.
All right, we're coming out of closed session, reconvening in an open session, but we're going to start with a motion to come out of closed session. Upon a motion made by council member...
Snyder.
Uh, sorry.
Snyder.
And seconded by council member...
Snyder, I'll second Phil's.
All right, so Duncan is on the motion, Snyder's on the second. All right, and passed by voted city council. Council reconvened in open session. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Carter, yep. All right, it is 11:57.
Hurry, hurry, hurry.
This is our certification. Upon a motion made by council member...
Duncan.
Duncan, seconded by council member...
Hiscott.
Snyder, okay. Uh, passed upon a affirmative roll call vote in open session. It was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, conveyed, convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session meeting by the body. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Carter, yep. All right, is there anything else to say tonight?
Move to adjourn.
All right, let's adjourn, let's do it. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We got it same day, all right.